Good evening, everyone. And welcome to a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Pearsall, Texas. We held July 9th. The time is 7:00 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Mayor Moore.
Present.
Mayor Lieutenant Julio Álvarez.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Richard Gadda.
Here.
Councilmember Sonia Álvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Raya Medina. Councilmember Walker Bivio. Councilmember Robyn Soria. Councilmember Gaby Laddes.
Here.
We have a quorum, so let us stand for our invocation as well as our pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we must give you all honor and glory in your face for allowing us to be here this evening this afternoon, Father. I ask that we bless the honor of City Councilors that give you worship with each and every one of them, with wisdom, knowledge, guidance, Lord, in Jesus' name, on ready for our staff, or in our city manager, or everyone here, Lord, that has an interest, Lord, in one home or another with the City of Pearsall, Father, credit. We bless you, Lord, that travel in from far, you will be with them on their way back home. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I thank you, ladies, to the flagrant of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice.
I'm going to add a little decorum to the floor of our agenda. So before we start with item five, we want to skip and we have guests here tonight, Mr. Blake Caesar, who has another appointment after this. So that would be items O, discussion and possible action on getting Republic Services on placing two yard bin at the West Side Catholic Cemetery and East Side Cemetery on the corner of Roosevelt and East Colorado. Okay, what's the reason for it?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, I've been approached by a couple of members of the Catholic Church if we would be willing to try to help them out from the Catholic cemeteries to see if we can somehow encourage Republic Services, the garbage company for the City of Pearsall, to see if they can help us out, donate, you know, two yarders for the garbage pickup there at the two cemeteries. And that's the reason for this purpose. And then I went in, called Mr. Blake, and asked him if he would call his company. And I don't know what the answer is yet.
So garbage is going to be, what, debris or like?
It's yes, ma'am. It's there, it's a two yarder.
Branches or?
Clean up the cemetery.
Clean up the cemetery, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Currently, the person that cleans the cemetery, he does have access to, you know, free access to dispose of all that material. I don't know what this is, same thing, or who we're talking about here, but.
No, this is, councilman is putting two yarders, one two yarder at the cemetery area on 1582, and the one over here on 13. You know, it's a two yarder.
Okay, permanent?
Yes, sir, yes.
So they don't keep going back and forth?
Yes.
And then that's not always going to?
The one thing we want to do, let's put locks on them, so they wouldn't come in. I fortunately stopped by yesterday, checking in with the ladies at the city, looked at the agenda, and saw, ooh, here Republic Services on there. So I thought I probably would show up tonight. And we're more than welcome for a cemetery, then a cause like that, to add the container to the free container that we provide to the city. So there'll be no charge. But I highly suggest we put locks on them, order them with locking mechanism, and we'll provide the locks.
Okay.
We'll provide two combination locks. And that way, somebody illegally dumped in there, we'll put it on the outside, and we can hopefully catch them good code compliance. But it, there won't be a free-for-all for everybody's stuff under the dumpster garbage truck. And so we'd like to offer that to the city. All we need to know is I'll get with Ms. Bee and get a work order put in to Republic, where to put them, and then we can get the locking mechanism on and get them delivered. But we just want to put them in the right place. And we probably want to put them where the cemetery can use them, but they're not out on the main drag, where, you know, everyone can stop by and dump them. But, you know, we're more than, more than proud that, you know, unfortunately, I think I'm going to be needing a cemetery for most of this, when I've been picking ladies, but.
Mayor, if I may, I'll ask anybody, is anybody here from the Catholic Church representing the Roger, Roger or?
Roger's not here.
Greg, Greg, who'll be the best person to, for Blake to, or be to contact for the keys?
Uh, probably our secretary there at the church. I'll give you a contact number.
If you'll get her number to Ms. Bee here at the city, where I come in, we get it, we put it on, that way we have a contact person, we get ready to deliver them, we know where to put them, and he'll take them care of.
No worries.
Okay? Thank you, sir. You bet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else I can do for you all? Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we need to entertain a motion to address this item, please.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the two, two yarder bins to be placed at the Catholic Cemetery, donated by Republic Services.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay. Now for our second guest, we're going to move to our TML discussion, because they came all the way from Austin, and I don't want to keep them too long. So that would be?
A.
A. Discussion possible, now, A, B, discussion possible action regarding the expense of the TML claim at Polo Patino Park. Entertain a motion, please.
A of the new business or?
Yes, new.
What should we discuss?
Second, all in favor for discussion?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, we do have these practice here that y'all have requested that y'all wanted to see everything in regards to your expenditures. I did provide an Excel spreadsheet on all expenditures, broken down by the content inside of the neighborhood center, as well as the building itself, where the funding went, what is left, and what we received, the one having each one, one million. And we also have TML here to answer any questions that y'all need to have. If there are any questions, I know it's a lot to look through, it's going to be quite simple to gather all this information that's been put together for you guys, if y'all need to review, and y'all can ask your questions. Like I said, TML is here, we have our representatives still there to address the concerns that y'all have asked in the previous meetings.
Thank you for coming.
Let me introduce ourselves. I'm Mike Rains, I'm the Claims Manager. This is Melanie DeFriskey, she's the Adjuster. And this is David Nix, our Director over Property Claims. Any questions that you might have in regards to this claim, we'd love to hear.
I didn't know y'all were coming, I didn't see y'all being down here as representatives coming down. But I do have tons of questions. But I'll be, I have a proposal that I'll be sending as a citizen, but it'll be sent out to the Board of Directors. I feel that, I spoke to Ms. Melanie one time, and she was very rude to me. I don't know why. She said that she could not disclose any information to me. And I just asked her a simple question, that she didn't know what I was asking, and why she was being so rude to me, that I would be forwarding my proposal, my concerns, to the Board of Directors. And like I said, so I'll just wait, and I'll send my proposals to the Board of Directors on that.
Any other questions that you might have?
Do you guys have questions?
Well, Mayor, I did have a few questions, but I needed, I did these books, because 10 minutes ago, so I haven't been able to review them yet.
If I, if I may, let, this, this is all a process that started with a building that was damaged over there at that park. And that was a covered loss, damaged building, burned. And basically what happened is, is that we worked, the proposal was brought to us that couldn't use this money in any unique way to help the community. And again, that money would, we agreed to that. And so the equation, how the claim works, just, just to kind of set the stage for what y'all are going to be reading, is there was, that building was going to cost X amount, a million dollars. How much was it?
Two point two.
Two point two, one million dollars, to completely rebuild that building as it was. Y'all asked us if you could build that building and have the functions of that building, or pay functions of that building somewhere else, and could you use some of that money that would benefit the city as a park? We agreed to that. So really, the only thing, and we paid a actual cash value, which you've heard, about half of that, we paid upfront. The only thing that we're waiting for now is to, y'all need, y'all just need to show us that the money that you spent on the park, plus the money that you're going to spend on this new building across the street, if it's more than 2.2 million, we're going to release the rest of that money. And then it's going to be in your coffers, and, but we need to have a contract, and we're understanding that y'all are going through that process right now, or maybe you already have, already led a contract. We don't have that yet. As soon as we get that, and that money that you spent on the park, plus the proposed building is more than that 2.2, we're going to release the money, and it's yours. And basically, we'll monitor it, help you if you need us to, but our job is kind of done, and then y'all just account for it and build your building. Yes?
Okay, so we understand how the process works, and the only reason I think what Mistress Immobile was trying to find out is that we exceeded 165,000 dollars of what the council had brought to you, or what they were going to spend. They exceeded it by 165,000 dollars. It's still not complete. We did not want to go with this new building yet, because we're not even finished with the park. That park has cost us over a half a million dollars. It's not even completed yet. So whatever the City Council had told you that they were moneyed up to budget it for certain items, did not get done. And we, that we want to know why it didn't get done, and who approved the 165,000 dollars if the council didn't. So that's what we're trying to figure out before we move to this. Our other concern is that building was not a City Hall before. They want it to be a City Hall now. We're robbing the West Side of what the West Side has. You know, that was the heart of the West Side. And that's what we're trying to figure out, why are we removing something so great, even though it was not a commission, but it was up and running at one time, which was the heart of the West Side? Now we're taking it out from the West Side, and we're bringing it to this side of town, and we already have a City Hall, but yet we're going to put a new City Hall there.
Can I ask a more question?
Yes.
The, that, the building that we're talking about, we, again, we don't know what the status of that is. Is it, is it going through an RSP process, and have y'all already led the contract for the building?
Yes, it has.
Yes, it's one of you guys? Okay. Well, then, are you planning on moving forward with that?
Yes, they've already built it.
We will need that contract, okay? And you can take your time to get it to us, that's fine. And then, the 100,000 dollars that was over and above that you're talking about, if the budgeted amount that was spent, plus this contract amount equals or exceeds the 2.2 million, you're still going to get the money.
Yeah, the question that we have here, we approved, for the record, I was against it. We approved the new building without any floor plans, without any budget, and no kind of budget of furniture costs, electrical costs. They just paid, what was it, how much was the, the, the yield?
Oh, 80.
They paid 80,000.
We have it for a plan.
Yes, but when we asked, we asked, what is, what is going to cost us to start, finish this building, because we're already over budget at the park? And they said, when we asked, they said, well, we don't have furniture in it, we don't have furniture in the budget, we don't have some other stuff in the budget, and we just went ahead and approved it otherwise. We want a dollar amount, we're, this is a lot of money that they've already gone over.
I might be a bit, asking all these questions, but that's not really going to be something that we're going to be.
Yes, and that's, that's what we're trying to do before we move on. They're trying to rush us to get this done, but we haven't even completed the half a million dollar park. It's broken. It's not finished. Restrooms have not been touched, the playground had broken items, the truck was broken, the parking lot's no good. But yet, we're going to go and move and build a brand new City Hall, that we already taken it out of the West, the heart of the West Side?
Yes, ma'am.
That's my problem, and that's what, we've been asking this for a month, and we got it today, 10 minutes, 15 minutes ago.
Well, I, it sounds like y'all have a lot to discuss, but what we are looking for is just that equation we talked about. And that's what, that contract that y'all approved will be a big part of it, and any proceeds that we have now, that are probably a part of what you're looking at, we're looking at, and again, we're just going to be seeing how much money you're going to spend, because all we're doing is releasing the amount of money that would have been spent if you would have rebuilt that building and been burned for a long time. That's the only thing.
Yeah, no, we understand that, we understand that. So we're already over budget, and we're going to start a building, and we're going to run out of money. And it's, we didn't have an engineer for the park, okay? So if they paid an engineer, we didn't have no engineer, because no engineer left for the park.
I really can't speak to what.
Because there wasn't, and that's, that's, yes, and that's why we are requesting this before we move on to this.
I just, I'll just say one thing real quick, and you'll read my proposal when I send it to the Board of Directors. But the concern that got me was, when they came, the council, I just got elected from the council, okay? I just got elected in May. So when the council came to me, that they wanted a vote for the 1.1 million dollars, I asked them, I said, well, what happened to the 1.3 million dollars? When I did an open record request, because they don't give you nothing free, you got to do open records requests, which is another issue, they gave me the proposals. When I read the proposal, without due respect, I totally disagree with the proposal, okay? How this council, this administration, past administration, was able to convince y'all, y'all, TML, okay, to give these people 1.3 million dollars on a fraudulent case? It's wrong.
What's?
Because, let me tell you why. Okay, not one time, and I've done my research, okay, and I grew up in that area, I grew up two blocks from there, I went to school there, I know about that facility, okay? Not one time was that facility a City Hall. If you look at the blueprints of the annexed building, that's what they're sending, they're sending around the City Hall, that it used to be a City Hall. That's why we're asking for that money. That's number one. That facility was never a municipal court. You understand? But if that's the way TML does work, that we just give you a paper, and you didn't do no research, and you didn't approve the 2.3 million dollars, I think y'all have a problem. And that's why I'm sending a letter to the Board of Directors.
That's not how, that's just not. What we did is, we sent some professional adjusters and appraisers to the site. They gave us what the building, you know, they were able to basically figure out how the building was built, construction type, what type of roof it had, all of those kind of things, then the layout of the building. And all they did is they established how much it would have cost to rebuild that building. We don't really care what it was used for.
Thank you.
It was just a building to us. Now, it had a name and an address and all that, but all we had to do to figure out how much money to give you, is to establish what it would cost to rebuild that building. And what we did is we said, okay, well, we don't know how much they're going to spend to build that building back, so we only gave you half of what that building was worth. And then we wait and see what you wanted to do. Well, that's when the proposal came for the park, and some other unique things that we thought sounded like it was going to help the community. So that was our motivation, to listen and do something unique, because we consider all 3,000 public entities that we cover partners of ours. And a regular insurance company probably would have said, no, we're not going to do that. We have a building to rebuild, y'all go ahead and rebuild the building, and that's it. And we, they would have waited, and they still would have been waiting to figure out what y'all were going to do. We don't work that way. The city proposed that we help you build that park, and put some extra things into it, fix it up for the community. Honestly, that was very unique, I had to get the executive director involved, these people talked to me, it made sense, because the city wanted. And so that, that, that all is a unique part of this claim, but we agreed to allow some of that 2.2 million dollars to be used for that purpose, because we want to be a department. And that's, that's the whole story. That's, that's what we did and why.
And we thank you for it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
We'll get all the necessary paperwork to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Be safe on the road.
And our contact information is with these folks, so if you want to call us, please do.
Can I have one more court, Stephen?
I do. And I'm always, sorry if there's anything that goes wrong with one of these claims, I'm responsible for all of it. And so, please let me know if anything else happens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's really, there's no action. This is mainly a discussion, so it's no action here. So we can move back to item 5A, presentation by Renaldo Trevino. It's no action, it was just a discussion.
Mayor, on this item, I spoke to Ms. Trevino, this was supposed to be a discussed and action item, and it was a discussion, so he wants to be placed on a regular, another question for action.
Another one?
Yes, ma'am. So it's no action.
Okay, so we move on to 6A. Action to consent agendas for eight minutes for June 1st, June 5th, June 11th, June 18th, and June 27th. This is an action item. Need to entertain a motion to review, and then?
Motion for you.
Second. All in favor? The guys had a, had a chance to peruse the minutes. If not, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes for June 1st, 5th, 11th, 18th, and 27th.
Motion, Mayor.
Second. All in favor, brush your hands, please. All right, the motion carries unanimously. So 7A, O Business, a discussion of possible action to issue a request for qualification for independent audit to audit, conduct an audit of TML claims for Polo Patino Park expensive. This is a previously tabled item, so we need to entertain a motion to untable, please.
Motion to untable.
Mayor, the second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, brush your hands, please. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, this is previously tabled for the request for qualification for independent auditors back on the agenda, to go ahead and see what y'all want to do in regards to issuing more people for auditor, and to open up for discussion, to get y'all to know whether or not to go out and take part.
Madam Mayor, this information that we got today, it is quite, it is quite lengthy. I feel comfortable in reviewing this, and then setting up a workshop, as we have previously discussed with the leading council. And that would put items 7A, 8A, and 8C on hold until we can review this information at least, first on what is in this package, so that we can understand well what happened, because obviously there are questions about the procurement process, and the work that was done at the park, and not done at the park, and so we, we need time for this. And so we need to, in my opinion, table items 7A at this point.
Okay, which also entails 8A?
8A and 8C, so that we can have a time to, to review all this, set up a workshop, so that we as a council can understand all the concerns that are involved in this, and make decisions to move on.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Would you like to set a date, or just to review?
We need to review it, and then possibly set a date to it.
Going to set the date today, or review instead of date?
Review.
Because you don't know how long it's going to take to go through all this.
Right, review and set a date.
There's a motion on the table, may I have a second, please?
Sir.
All in favor of tabling item 8, 7A, 8?
8A and 8C.
8A and 8C. Brush your hands, please, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, just for the record, start, for the record, it means, make my comment on record, please. The reason I voted for the motion was because we barely got the information we've been asking for, for the past month, we barely had it like 10 minutes ago. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we move it on, let's skip, nope, moving on to item D. Is this the same one, right? Would this apply as well? Discussion, why is this on the? Discussion of possible action regarding an appointment of our Lial, and harder to do the forensic audit for 1.3 million. I think this kind of?
Yes.
Retains to the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, let's entertain a motion to table this item, please, as well?
Motion to table this item as well.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Unanimous, Mr. Lee. So we're going to move on to E, discussion possible action regarding ordinance number 2019-07-01, amending adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018. This is an action item, we need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Brush your hands. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, due to the audit on there, I would like the West Amendment to go ahead and do the estimate for the cost of the audit, therefore, this audit is going to address the West Amendment to go ahead and to follow through on that, so you can go ahead.
So this ties into?
No action.
This need to be, so no action?
No action.
So moving on to item F, presentation for water board grant by Ti Hanina Galvan Lawrence LLC. Is this an action item, or just a presentation?
Action item.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor? Is that gentleman here?
Good morning, or good afternoon, here's Mayor, Councilmembers, for the record, Robert Pidina, with Pidina Delvano Lawrence. And I appreciate the opportunity, allowing me to present our credentials and discuss the Texas Water Loan Board. Financing options are available, not only for cities, but counties and any issuer looking to do any kind of water, wastewater projects. And again, before I go on in the presentation, I want to thank the council for allowing me the opportunity to represent the city as your financial advisor for almost 10 years with my prior friend. My partner Adrian Delvano and I left, I started, I started on my own. My partner Adrian Delbonne and I left, I started, once I started my own company on March the 16th. So return the page to the first few pages are just going to be information on this firm before I go into the Water Development Board scenarios. And again, as I stated, Mr. Delbonne and I started this firm on March the 16th. We acquired Lawrence Financial Consulting, an existing firm out of Austin that's been around for 20 years. Not only did we acquire his firm, we also acquired his 20-plus clients and brought him over to P. Hidina, Delbonne, and Lawrence. And on page two, you have the contact information. My son over has been the same the whole time I represented the city. I've been in this business 18 years. Mr. Delbonne has been in the business 23 years, and Mr. Lawrence has been in the business a little over 30 years. And if you turn to page three, on this page, these are the four financings that both Mr. Delbonne and I have assisted the city on as your financial advisor. Four financings totaling over $19 million. The projects range from street repair, curb, sidewalk. You have purchasing equipment for fire departments, for police, city equipment, other needs, vehicles, all these four financings. One of them, the second one in 2012, $1.7 million, was with the USDA. The interest rates on the first one, 2.36% on the May 2016, followed by the USDA, 2.125% the February 2012, 3.15%, and August of 2006, 4.25%. These financings range from 15 years all the way out to 40 years for USDA loan, and that USDA loan happens to be the lowest interest rate out there that the city has. So right now, your funds are invested at low interest rates even given the environment that we're in right now. Now, we turn to page four. I'm headquartered out of San Antonio, that's my office there. Mr. Delbonne is in Fort Worth. Mr. Lawrence is in Austin, and we also have a representative that worked with us in our product firm for nine years, Nancy Mendoza of our Dallas office. Page five, our goals and mission statement, our purpose, our firm objectives are to provide superior service, establish trust, focus on financing. And if you turn on, according on to page six, the three main partners, myself, Mr. Delbonne, Mr. Lawrence, combined, we have 95 years of experience within this industry. And we turn to page six, some of the things that we work on, we represent the clients, we analyze tax rate impacts, the revenue coverages, coordinate rating meetings, establish transaction schedules for all parties to share. When I say all parties, we talk to bond counsel, insurance company, rating companies, the engineers, Texas Water Development Board, banks that are looking to loan the city money, and also preparing the operating document and continued disclosure. And on page seven, these are some of the issues that we currently represent or represent in the past. Within the last six weeks, we've been hired, my firm and I have been hired by Frito County and by Pierceaw, Pennant School District, both that we represented in our prior firm. So in the last, going on four months, almost four months, it'll be next week, that we've been established as the Hidina, Delbonne, Lawrence, we've already transitioned over 20 accounts to our new firm. These are clients that we've represented in our prior firm, anywhere from 17, 18 years all the way to 23 years. There will be more clients coming on this summer and in the fall that are looking to make a change from what I also understand. And if you turn to page eight, here are our city clients that we represent, either Mr. Lawrence or myself or Mr. Delbonne. Out of these city clients on page eight, I've represented them about 19 of them. Four of them have already made the change over to the Hidina, Delbonne, Lawrence. And like I said, there's other cities that are looking to make the move here in the next four to six weeks. Now on page 10, this is our Texas Water Development Board experience. Mr. Delbonne and I and Mr. Lawrence have represented these issuers on moving forward with the Water Development Board projects, whether it be water or wastewater, AKA sewer projects, whether it be lines or treatment plants, whatever it is that's dealing with the water and sewer, the Texas Water Development Board, if they qualify, you could potentially receive funding. And I'm going to go to the next page, but some of the issues within this area, City of Cattula, Villarreal, Eagle Pass, Laredo, and Sapota County, just a minute. Now on page 10, some examples of the Texas Water Development Board financing. Again, water or wastewater, and there is funding available out there. The engineer is normally the one that goes out there and fills out the intent use plan, which is the second, towards the bottom of the page, or the project information form, whether it be the city engineer or the city user or generic consulting firm. They'll go out there and they'll do an assessment citywide. If you're looking to annex, I believe the city manager is talking, some potential annex property, or there's any water sewer needs, they do a whole analysis of the city to determine what needs to be done, what needs to be repaired. Because the last thing you want to do is go out there and repair streets, get them done, and then three or four years later, you have to tear them up to go under the surface, take care of the water and sewer line. Trust me, it happens a lot, and you would think only small shores, it happens in large issuers out there where they tear up a street, a year later, a year and a half later, they tear it up again and go down to replenish a water or sewer pipe. So some of the options that you have are drinking water projects, again, they have below-market interest rate loans and loan forgiveness. Some of the examples, as of yesterday, they're 20-year financing, the interest rate 1.26%. It's a great financing interest rate. You can't get any lower than that in the open market or anywhere. It's a great source of borrowing. It just takes a little while to get the funding available for your projects. It's not as long as USDA, but it could be anywhere from six months to a year, depending how quick the engineer has the information, how the staff gives the information to consultants, and turn it around to the agency, and the agency gets the ball rolling on their end. So a 30-year financing, if we have water projects, again, would be 1.42%. USDA, you already have a loan there, it's another great source of funding. They go out 40 years. No one in the US markets goes out 40 years for financing. They have low interest rates available now. The difference is, it could be a two-to-five-year process. And we all know, as a year goes by, that project is going to get more expensive for every year that goes by, the delay. You can add either 5 or 10% on top of that. So it's a great source, but it's going to take some time to get the funding and commitment from the USDA. Now, the other projects would be the wastewater, which they call the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. They have low-market interest rate loans and also loan forgiveness. The loan forgiveness is what they call grants. So they say loan forgiveness, they're going to give you the money, they call it loan, and if everything goes through, they're going to waive either a portion of that or all of that, and you won't have to pay it back. Now again, that is all determined, the projects that qualify for these fundings are put together by your either city engineer or your engineering consulting firm. They do an assessment. Again, they fill out the public information form and the IUP. Now, under the clean water, again, this would be for wastewater projects slash sewer. You have 20-year financing, 1.31%. These change every week. They adjust the rates accordingly, so these are below-market interest rate loans. So if you go to 30-year financing on the wastewater projects, you go 1.47%. So when I say they're below the open market financings, what I'm saying is, if we're in the market right now for a wastewater project, right now, right here, we have wastewater project 30 years, 1.47%. You can add 130 basis points on top of that, so if you make that, there'll be 2.77% if you're borrowing in the open market. So they're giving you a discount. The state's offering every issuer that comes to them a discount depending on what the projects are and how you are falling to their category of what they call disadvantage. Now, again, the city engineer fills out these forms. A role of financial advisor is to work alongside your bond counsel, alongside your finance director, your engineer, your city manager. We all work together. There's several different requirements that each consultant is in charge of in what they call the application. There's a financial section that we're responsible for. There's a legal section that bond counsel is responsible for, engineering is responsible for a certain section. All this, some of this is provided by staff, the rest we produce, every consultant produces up with the application. Once an application is considered complete, submitted to the Water Development Board, then they go through the process of determining how poor is the community, what they call, are you going to receive loan forgiveness grant, are you going to get 0% loan, or are you going to get low-interest rate loan funding? They call this the disadvantage form or what they have. And what that is, it's based on the Texas median household income. If you're 75, and if you fall 75% of that or lower, then they start determining if you get low-interest rate loan, or if you get 30% loan forgiveness, 50% loan forgiveness, or if you get a higher percentage of loan forgiveness slash grant money. So all this is a process that you go through in Water Development Board. It's an invitation. I mean, you have to fill out these forms, the engineer has to fill out these forms, the PIF and the IUP, submit it to the agency, then they review it, they determine where you fall, and then they're going to simulate an invitation to apply for this funding for your project. So again, the PIF, the public information, the project information form and the intent use plan, it's going to have all the projects that you need, the lines, the treatment plant, whatever it is that's water sewer related, they will prioritize it to tell you what kind of funding you're going to get, loan forgiveness slash grant, 0% or loan forgiveness. So the one for this current fiscal year or for this fiscal year and next, that application process started in March of this current year. So there's still room, we're only about four months away from that, so there's still some opportunity there. In full disclosure, my brother-in-law is the director there, so the grant funding, loan forgiveness has pretty much been used up, there's not a lot available. They're still going through the process, but there is next year's cycle to look at, to have your engineer fill out the forms, submit your projects in. Nothing better, nothing gained. It doesn't cost you anything to fill out these, have your engineer fill them out, submit them in to see what's available. Because what we do is, a financial advisor, we come to front of you, you told us you received a form from the Water Development Board saying you have funding available, come to us. We have the majority of issuers saying, "Let's go." Takes six months to a year to get the Water Development Board funding. We've had other clients say, "I can't wait. I'm getting penalized and fined by TCEQ, so I need to get this project done quickly, quickly." So they go another route. They issue certificates of obligation, which the city has done before. They issue revenue bonds, which the city hasn't done before, but they issue this other form, then you go through a bank to borrow the money, and then at a later date, they'll go to the Water Development Board and they'll ask them, "Can you refinance this debt for us, take us out of a higher interest rate and put us into one of your programs at a lower interest rate?" It's a little longer process, but they're willing to do that, and that is something the neighbor down the road, the city of Cattula. They needed to move forward, they needed to move quicker, they couldn't wait, so we went out and did a financing certificate of obligation, posted in the local newspaper, same rate two consecutive weeks, got the finance and moved forward. I think about a year later, we went out and asked the Water Development Board if they could refinance it for us, take it out of a rate, move it into a lower rate, and what they did, they extended it from 15 years to about 20 years. So they made the payments a little smaller also to give the city a little breathing room. So not only do you have the Water Development Board to borrow the funds from, you can look at the banks, you can consider cash on hand, if you have a lot of cash as a fund balance that's available, you can reduce the product by using cash on hand, reduce the interest costs, not borrow, just use cash on hand if the fund balance is exceeding a certain map. Or you can issue certificates of obligation, doesn't require a bond election, it's a notice and a tip in the local newspaper, but 5% of registered voters sign a petition, you can stop that from the city when we're pulled with that. You can have a bond election, and that can only be held every May and November twice a year. Or you can issue revenue bonds, doesn't require a bond election, and it is something that the interest rate in the Water Development Board is the same whether you do COs, a bond election, a revenue bond, the interest rate's going to be the same. So there is sources available for funding. The thing is, you need to consider the projects, your engineer, staff, and council get together, determine what's priority, what needs to be done first, projects 1 through 10 or 1 through 20, prioritize those, whether it be utility water and sewer, or whether it be streets, and that's where we're hearing a lot, those are the top two with every issuer around here. I also represent the city of Caddeesa Springs, there's a lot of traffic over there, they have streets, they have utility needs also. So prioritize the projects, then we decide what funding is available and what's the best way to approach it. So on page 12, these are just our resumes. Again, I've been in the business 18 years, but I was a portfolio manager with the State of Texas Treasury Controller's Office for 12, 13 years. And Mr. Delbonne, again, has been in the business on page 13, 25 years total. He's been 23 years with a prior firm, where I was there 18 years. And Mr. Lawrence, again, has been in the business well over 30 years. He's a former tax attorney, former securities attorney, CPA for bond counsel, and he's been doing financial advisory work the same as I have for the last 10 years. So again, we're out of you firm, we acquired this firm, changed the percentage of ownership and changed the name of the firm. So again, in the last four months, we've already transitioned over 20 some accounts, so combined, if you all have accounts of ours, we have well over 40 combined financial advisory firm accounts. We don't do anything else but focus on the issuer. Again, I represent the city of Pierceaw, Pennant School District, and Frito County, and there's other cities coming on board. And I did, for almost 10 years, represent the city of Pierceaw. Mr. Delbonne and I did assist the city on those four financings. And I hope this answers some of the questions on the Water Development Board. There's a lot of issuers out there, you're not the only ones, it's just how important are the projects based on priority that the Water Development Board is going to determine what kind of interest rate, or whether you get grant, or whether you get a certain percent of loan forgiveness. All those projects, that's going to help them determine where you fall based, again, on the Texas median household income and a few other similarities. I noticed a lot of information, didn't want to take too long, but I passed out my card, my cell phone's always been the same. I've worked with, like I said, Mr. Reyes, he hired me over 10 years ago at Towne Pico City. I represented the city of Villarreal as your financial advisor, also the city of Eagle Pass, and that's how I met with Reyes. And congratulations, in full disclosure, I spoke to him earlier today, I told him it's a great community, great council, and he's going to do a wonderful job here, and wish him the best. And again, there's some familiarity with the city manager and myself, going back to West Texas and a little bit there in Villarreal.
Any questions there, councilmembers or staff?
I have a question for Bobby. Bob, this item I had placed on the agenda like a month ago. The item came straight from the Commissioners Court meeting that I attended, and somehow it got reworded here. It was not worded the way I wanted it and asked. The reason I'm asking is because it says, "Presentation by Water Board Grant by Tijanina Delbonne." Okay? And it's an action item. But what I wanted, I wanted to see if the council would be willing to hire him on as a financial consultant. Okay? Very similar to the county and school there. But according to the wording, it just says, "Presentation Water Board Grant." You know, it didn't talk about financial consultant. Can we throw that in there or not?
It appears confusing to me.
Yes, sir.
It's confusing to me, it's potentially confusing to others.
Yes.
My preference would be that they state very simply that the intent is to consider hiring or appointing a financial advisor, and it doesn't. It looks like it's just a presentation. I was curious as well as why it said action... I was curious as well as why it said action items when it says presentation. And the other thing we have to be careful about, if you look at all the other agenda items, the city has a common practice in how it conducts its business as it relates to making decisions. If you look all the way down, it says discussion possible action over and over again. My preference is that if the public refuses seeing it that way, then keep on doing it the same way so that we don't potentially confuse anyone or make anyone think that it's different from what it just simply used to be. My preference would be that it says discussion possible action regarding, just like it does.
You can put it back in the wording as an action item.
Okay, but it says action item at the end.
It does, it does. But I read it as a presentation. Now granted, from looking at the agenda item, I had no idea you were considering appointing or hiring a financial advisor.
Bobby, would you be able to refer back to the item that when it was requested to be placed on the agenda? The wording was discuss impossible action regarding the hiring of Mr. Pedey's firm.
That's a question, no, it should have been put on the way it was requested.
Yeah, that's how it was requested, but it wasn't. Another question, Josie, does, do you, when you do the agendas, do you send it over to the attorney to review it?
Yes, we look at it to see.
So you had a question?
I'm sorry.
Do you have a question that, that item? When Josie said it to you?
I don't know that this was on the draft. The draft, what was provided to me to review last week were the agenda items, about a dozen or so that were requested by council members.
We had several drafts going through that we were looking at together.
This is not the first time it happened. You know, people travel long ways and, you know, we're trying to get away from all these special meetings. And if you notice, every time we have a meeting, it's tabled up due to an incorrectity put on the agenda. That's why I want to know, is attorney reviewing? Or did we just submit it and say, oh, there's a error? Let's put it back on because, you know, we're wasting people's time, you know?
And I can tell you an answer to this really. When I review it, I typically tell staff, if there is a question, you talk to the mayor or council member that is requesting the item. Let them clear up what their intent is if I have a question. I don't remember seeing this particular agenda item. I really don't. What I do remember seeing is about a dozen items that were requested. And as far as I know, my instructions were put those on as requested.
Yes. So then you're saying that we cannot refer, if we make a motion, make refer to what was supposed to be placed on the agenda? Does it say action item on it?
It does. And let me put it to you this way.
Because the presentations, they're never action items. They're just presentation. Then you go to the next item, then that will be presentation.
And usually, that's one way of doing it. And this is one way that the city has learned to pass. Is there's a discussion or a presentation and then an action item that, that...
Follows it.
That follows it. And we don't have that in this particular case. I mean, it clearly says presentation for water board went by. But it does say action item. That we can't refer to the way it was submitted because that's not the way it was posted. And we didn't put that up on the bulletin board or on the website for council and the public's consideration that this is exactly what we're referring. And what happens routinely is I get, I get drafts and they go back and forth. I don't necessarily get all of the agenda. I'm just winding up on an agenda.
Should we recommend that if a council member is requesting for something to be placed on the agenda, that that draft also be submitted to Mr. Bobby for the approval, so we know that it matches?
That would help because what I typically, like I mentioned, I'll always ask staff, please check with the council member to make sure that their intent is clearly expressed on the agenda. I also try to honor the way it's worded. I typically tell staff, don't change the wording without checking with the council member because I don't want to change your intent.
Because I don't think you can because it's signed off with the signatures.
Yes.
And it's whatever we put on there, that is what we want on the agenda.
Right.
So therefore it shouldn't be changed. So if we can, Josie, next time is if council members do request for something to be on the agenda, we send it to the law firm to be approved or to look over it. Send a copy that our council members are submitting so we can make sure the wording's correct. Because this is not the first time. And people are either coming in from all the towns or we have people sitting here for hours and then we can't do nothing about it.
That's what we discussed last week was, was put them on the agenda as requested because the signatures were there. If you have any questions about the item, then of course, refer back to the people who signed the request.
Yes, this was a previous, from a previous meeting. So we did the, the ones you requested for this meeting was identified exactly as stated. But this item was from a previous meeting. We just carried it over, but we, I guess, missed exactly.
Yeah, but the motion was to go ahead and Mr. Pedey for consideration of the services to the city.
Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Pedey.
One more thing, in full disclosure, another concept of transition over we have requested the, we terminated our contract. Love it, Bobby. Thank you, I'm happy to back you.
Thank you. So moving on to item G. Discussion possible action to get with county and state on interlocal agreement to fix Chaparral Road and Roosevelt Street to East Alabama. This is an action item. We can entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Just a second. Father Ava, show hands. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, council members, this item was placed as well as requested by Ms. Felicia and three, two others to identify an interlocal agreement to fix Chaparral Road from Roosevelt to East Alabama Street. I had presently talked to a judge before to go ahead and do an interlocal agreement. He said that was fine. We just need to go and present something. I did also talk to Texas. They won't enter into any interlocal agreements. They have their own going on. But this is based on the agenda for your all's review and consideration. So we're up to discuss.
Mayor, once again, I put this item on the agenda because there's a lot of concerns and there's a lot of citizens here from Roosevelt and Chaparral Road here to express their concerns on the street. I know there's a lot of streets in the city of Pierceaw that need immediate attention. But this one is really in dire need of attention. As, as I was doing research, I'm hoping that on the motion that we can direct the, the legal counsel, Bobby, to look into this matter. And the reason I'm saying is because it's, it's a big mess out there. And in a mess that, that there's property that has been, belongs to private citizens that now is a little leadway of the city of Pierceaw. It's in the maps. But then again, city attorney, we have to be, look at that issue and determine that. I spoke to the city engineer. He's got the maps on it because supposedly this is an ongoing issue. It's been going on for like four or five years and nothing's been done. Also, he was, the city engineer was talking about, you know, the possibility of doing a retention pond. Retention pond that, I don't remember if Mr. Manzano's here. But maybe the city, if I'd be willing to advise them that formula, to do a retention pond, to do drainage, you know, coming from Chaparral and Roosevelt. And right in the corner, that's where it all floods up pretty bad. Also, if we go further up, and I spoke to Star, on the map, that if you go further up on Chaparral, there is a road that leads into that property. It's still in the city property, but it's already blocked off. It's blocked off by a citizen of Pierceaw with a gate and lock in there. And in the map, it shows it's the city of Pierceaw property, but it's already blocked off. So that's another issue that Bobby is going to have to look into to see, you know, who does it belong to. And then, and the reason that is so important is because I don't know if a retention pond might go into that area that's our property, that that's where we actually build it. And, you know, we're going to have to knock that gate down. But that gate is closed and it's got a lock. But unfortunately, I just happened to pass by it. It was open. I went in there and then when I turned back, it said private property. So I came back over here and I looked at the map and with Star's help, it just said city property. So that's another issue there. So like I said, you know, those are just the second phase to the, to the problem. The first phase is what are we going to do with Roosevelt Street? What are we going to do with that street? It's, it needs immediate attention. And that's why, you know, I talked to very little about Mr. Atlantis like a month ago. And he said that, he stated for the record that they have been working on it for like three years and nothing had been done.
Yeah, well, we had requested from L M V to look into it and so forth. And I remember that we brought it up about four years ago, actually. Property owners, there were some property owners that wanted to have their piece of property purchased from them or something like that. So I don't know if you recall any of that conversation with the council meeting. But it's, it's something that we've been trying to get done, you know? Because it is a bad turn over there. Roosevelt all the way up to the county road area is pretty bad.
I think we need to stay on the engineers. I did some researching on it. It's only brought up once and that was it. We already know how L M V is. If we don't keep asking them, they will put it on the back burner. It's been four years and it's only been brought up one time in a council meeting. It's our job to make sure it gets done. And if L M V ignores it, we got to bring it back to their attention. So we really need to get it going. And that street there, Alabama Roosevelt, what is it? Chaparral, it's been erected. Nobody's done anything to it at all. Not even a more gravel, dirt, anything.
Yeah, they tried to push gravel and stuff up, but it doesn't work. Because the water washes out.
Yeah, but we need to go out there.
Why wouldn't they just put number two base and couple of load with?
Well, that's, that's the last thing we talked about here is zip it up and fixing it up. But there's some drainage issues out there. The water needs to go somewhere.
Yeah, but if y'all can just build it up where the water won't go into the stuff.
It just comes on my way back.
If everybody was best fix it.
And we, we, we talked about zipping it up, fixing it up like that. But, you know, we were waiting on what's going to happen with the water. But, you know, I can assure you, we've been trying to get that street fixed.
Another problem that, that it hurts when they drain all the water and it becomes bad to then grow. And then it just sit there for a long time. And then it rains and then it gets worse. The more it rains, the worse that puddle gets worse. And then we have, even we have to go into, into gravel property to get around all those puddles. It gets, this way it gets worse and worse every time we go to there. And like Boba said, we've been calling over here and they tell us we're going to see somebody do something. And then it just goes time, goes by and by and nothing's been done. So, I mean, if y'all don't believe us.
No, I have pictures.
Yes, thank you.
And I repair, I drove down that road.
And I'm going to go ahead and... One at a time, when one person's talking, meaning, meaning. Finished?
No, I said I have pictures here because I went down there to see it for myself. And it is really bad. And I do want something done immediately. I don't care if it's a maintainer to, to throw dirt in there, fix it up, cover it up. Something needs to be done because there's no passage.
They still get bored. We need to throw number two base. Assuming that a couple of load, it's only about eight hundred bucks. There you will try to fix that road. And for a, for a time to do something else. Because we have to drive through those roads like six, seven times a day and maybe sometimes more.
I don't know if the rest of the council recalls the...
Yes, I do.
Our last conversation was to have it zipped up and work on it. I guess it was about six months ago or so. I don't remember exactly. And I thought that was getting done, but I kind of didn't. I've been out there the last month or so. It's, you know, the same.
We got, we did get some new drawings from one of our street guys, Dogo Mel. He went over, I believe, yesterday to do a, we had drawing to see how much we're going to have to raise it. Probably going to have to get, ask him to get some estimates on as far as the base and what base will withstand that kind of tension down there for drainage issue and everything. Bring in the, the, the ver, go ahead and level out. But we are trying to get estimates to see.
Could I have a word please?
One second.
Go ahead, Mr. Mel.
Yeah, we're, okay. It's like Mr. Ramita says, the water that comes from the field, it normally runs down that road. And we built it up so many times that, that water runs and it's almost like a flood zone because the drainage that runs that way, there's a ditch, it's not even a place.
Is draining from Patty Herb's farm?
Yes, ma'am. Every time it rains, I mean, we've had built it up. We have backed it up. But all it is doing is just going up and it's getting a lot rougher than it is. But it needs to be done. It really needs to be bladed. Hold on, man. Okay, it needs to really be bladed and redone. But, I mean, you got to build it up way up high and you know what it is, right? It takes money in order to do that. And like we normally say, we don't have money. And it's going to take a lot.
So to divert it to a different direction, because we have no jurisdiction over private property.
Yeah, what they can do, they can blade it on this side. The, the farmers can blade it so the water can run towards them instead of into the, to the road. Because every time, I mean, it rains, it just gets like that. No matter what kind of base or what kind of material you'll, you'll throw up there, you're just wasting it unless you build it up.
But you said there's a drain, but who does that drain belong to?
It belongs to the city.
Oh, it belongs to the city.
Yeah. It's like a spillway that goes, but the parliament, if you do that, the lady on the corner of Deer Crawling is going to complain because it flushed her house.
So we fixed one problem, we got to make another one.
Yes, exactly.
You need to probably bring it up. You got to do it, Chad, right? What do we do with this puzzle, man? There's a storage pump that was right there at the corner now with all the water there. Major problems with that sort of pump.
Sort of pump.
It's right there at the corner. And the fence, somebody wrecked into it, been like that for a year. The fence around the pump, it has to be fixed.
Yeah, we did, I did let Mr. Galvano know. He tried to, I showed him down that road. It's water board thick pieces in the part area. The fence, it has been five square meters. These can really jump that way as well.
It's a very high any traffic.
That's another reason why that road is really bad. So it was that road, heavy traffic, you know, the flooding, the flood zone as well. These can flip down. So it's everything. Like you said, we're going to do, we got it all right. So that's why it's taken so long to build up a plan. And I know y'all have been waiting for so long. But we'll readdress this and we're going to...
My problem is how long does it take to just cover the path that we can go through? We haven't go to the side, even to Medrano's way to get rock, just to make the turn. And we take a lot of, a lot of rubble there.
One second, one second. Let him finish. Let him finish in units.
I know we got a lot of, a lot of their drainage and we got it with all that. Right now, let's fill the holes. And then we can, we'll be talking about, there's some huge holes there. We're in the front.
Okay, so we, we can take care of, release the problems for now? And then continue with the, the process of getting something more permanent, okay?
But Mayor, oh...
And on the, in a local agreement, have we come up with a price for the county?
We've done it in the past where they helped us with Gilliam Road. I haven't gone back to him to go ahead and get on the agenda to see what we can go ahead and do. But we'll definitely look at that route to do some interlocal agreements to help assist us in all of it.
But we don't have a dollar amount.
We don't.
Mayor, and the reason I put it down there with the county and the city is because the county has the equipment. They have the equipment. And I know that y'all did the project with Gilliam Road. And it's, it's holding off real good. So that's what I want to do here. But I wanted to do with the county, I wanted to do all Chaparral. Not just, because see, what Chaparral desire halfway for Mr. Ramita... do all Chaparral, not just, because see, what Chaparral desire halfway for Mr. Ramírez lives, go, comes into the city of Pearson. Then the rest all the way back to San Jalo is county. But if we can work it out with an interlocal agreement with the county, we can do it very similar with, we do the Gilliam, do all of Chaparral and then come all the way down to Roosevelt, all the way to Alabama Street. And, uh, but that's it, that's the second phase. The first phase is exactly what they're saying, is that immediate attention right now. And, uh, I'm hoping, Mayor, that if the motion passes to go fix it, you know, please don't just go and put just a, a load of dirt and, if it rains this weekend and watch it off. You know, do some work on it, you know, zip it for like a week and whatever needs to be done, you know? And I know it's, you know, we're gonna be throwing money out because eventually we're gonna have to bu- build it back up. But like I said, that's gonna be a Bobby and an engineer, a project.
And on Gilliam Road, didn't we need to do, um, drainage system over there and they didn't do it? They just zip through there? But that needed also drainage, you know? I don't, I don't think the drainage went. So I, what I'm saying is that the drainage system that Gilliam Road needs, this road needs too.
Okay.
They, they still fixed it without doing the drainage.
The, the, the water that collects up there, that's a key issue.
Yeah, but we still fixed the road.
Yeah, but, because the road is high enough to, to be.
But we still fixed it. I, I call it a band-aid, my, my, we can put a fifty thousand dollar band-aid, a hundred thousand dollar band-aid over here too. They've been injected way too long already. And I can let y'all know that we will stay on top of this to make sure they don't go throw a pile of dirt and then be on the way. So I will give y'all my word that I will drive by there to make sure it gets done.
I have a question for the council. On, on the issue of the property owners owning part of that level, uh, how, how can that be, how can you proceed on that?
Uh, I'm sorry. There, there was a question at one time that, that by the way, I mean, on Roosevelt, uh, was not a property, not a, it wasn't a property part of that easement or road or whatever it belongs to some of the residents. So I think that was the, the galaxy behind some of that is why the city at one time didn't want us to do anything with that road. I know we haven't been asked to look at it, but we look at, we look at, at all those questions we read. Um, it's, it's a violation of what a, a private property owner cannot through his own, own actions defer property onto another private property owner and, and that includes public property. So one property owner cannot cause a problem for adjoining property owner without being accountable for that. So, but the city still has a road and if you have property, if you have streets, if you have rights away, uh, to make sure that adjoining property owners aren't creating a problem for the city and its residents. Drainage is your responsibility, uh, but that also includes not allowing private property owners to create a problem where they're draining onto public property and creating problems for public and private property owners here. So, um, I'd be happy to look at it, just kind of hard for me to visualize.
So, so, so personal property and, and the owner doesn't wanna give up.
In a situation where an owner doesn't wanna give up, I mean, the, the city has options, just like the county, any government entity will have options.
Public domain.
Yes, you want to, you always want to try to acquire it, uh, you know, at, uh, at a cost that's acceptable to the, which is your resident, your, your, your taxpayers. Absolutely, if you really need it, then you have to go, you have to go after. If that's what this council decides they need to do, sometimes it's necessary to acquire private properties, uh, through end domain to serve public purpose, which don't mean you have to pay for it, but you're gonna be paying, um, you know, a price value for that property in order to take it.
Oh, cool, yeah. That easement that they, they were talking about, that easement is, that easement on their property, is that, is not with the street? What they were talking about maybe six, seven years ago about it being, and what I can recall, is that it was easement for the water and the sewer and the drainage. It has nothing to do with the street. So the street should be able to be fixed. The easement had to do with, um, so many feet from the street for to see how our drainage system's gonna come along the water. That's what we were talking about years ago. But that had the easement part, the street is ours and the drainage is our responsibility, just like Mr. Bobby said. So I think we're a little confused on the easement part. That easement, because we're trying to go in there and lay and figure out the drainage, but the owners own some of it, but there's still easement and we go into public domain. Of course, we might do everything the right way and talk to residents and I'm sure at this point, they're gonna be willing to let us put a drain on their, on their grass to make sure it's not flooded. But I know that it has nothing, what I can remember has nothing to do with the street part.
The, uh, the last comment I have to make before the motion, Mayor, is that, um, as I was speaking to, to Robert, uh, on this project, uh, he said that the issue there is only two feet. That's all it is. Two feet from the, the west side and two feet from east side. That's it. But there is a, a, a street there, you know, but the, the, some of the landlords are making a big deal that it belongs to them, but, but it doesn't. So then I asked him, I said, well, how, how wide is it? And he said it was like thirty feet, thirty feet. So it's plenty enough to, you know, for us to maintain that street. So, but like I said, Robert has, uh, has all the, the, the map and everything on it. But like I said, nothing's been done.
Can I ask a question? Because I, I watched a lot of that work being done out there, you know, really poorly done, whoever did the sewer work and so forth, and absolutely destroyed the roads. If I'd been living there then, I would've been going to fit immediately because the roads have been destroyed by the city.
When was this?
And of course, I know, I understand you wanna fix it, but I think going forward, you need to, like I tell my people all the time, you don't write the check till you looked at the finished product. And that, that thing has been a war zone forever. Ever since they started sewer lines and water lines out there, it's been horrible.
When was this?
This been years ago.
I'm with you right there, Roy. I'm with you right there, exactly, this morning. I've, I've, I've talked to several people before and nothing's been done. City goes out there and throws a little bit of gravel right there. Next rain that comes around, well, it washes everything out. People from the neighborhood, they try to fix the road. So we can all pass by there comfortably? And what do they get, they do, they get threatened by the city. Next time they're doing something like that, they're gonna get fined. They can get thrown in jail. No, us that we live out there in that country, in that side of the town, we have to deal with that. And it's not only that corner Roosevelt and Chaparral, it's all Chaparral roads, it's messed up. It's all messed up. We have to deal with that. We, us, my mom, my sister, everybody has to live out there. We have to, when it drains, everything drains out into our six acres. We have to walk out there in a foot deep of nothing but sewage water, sewage water. We all have to walk out in our, in our rubber boots. You know kids ain't gonna wait for rubber boots? They're out there playing and pissing, you're, I mean, crap.
So.
That is right. It's not right at all. And I have asked, and I have came before to the city and I have presented pictures to the city star, I gave Star some pictures, she was gonna present them and stuff. I'm not the type of person to come over here and talk because I'm, I get pissed off so easily. I get pissed off so easily. But now I am here, I am gonna talk for, for my sister, for my mom, for my cousin, for everybody that's here, because we lived there in that area. And all that water that pisses and, and crap goes into our yards and our kids playing that. We need this, we need it fixed. We need it fixed and we need it fixed like as soon as possible because we have been asking for the past fifteen years for this shit to get fixed and it hasn't.
Okay, so it was same like Gillian, that road was like that for a very long time before we came along.
Yeah, before y'all.
Before we eventually got, um, we've eventually got it done with the help of the county. Now you're on the agenda and with the help of the county, we're gonna come up with the cost and see if we can do the same thing. So you wanna have a road that's just gonna break down because somebody's throwing dirt or gravel out there.
And we, we got petty dirt, petty dirt, it gets flooded, petty dirt gets flooded, their fields get flooded. All they do, they, they cut a trench right there at the edge of their fields and all that water washes all the way down to our houses. Our places. And that's wrong. And you can go, when it's flooded, real crazy, go and watch, look at their field.
I've seen it.
They gotta cut right there where they just go up the shovel and everything washes out into our place, into our place. And I guess some of these guys are, are from the front of the down and stuff, you know, it washes all, off into Deer Creek Crossing and everything, everything. But we, that we got such a tanks, we're, our kids are playing in that stuff.
I see. All right, yes, sir.
Yeah, so what Roy was saying about that road, that was a good road. Then with the sewer came in and they tore it down and then the third, you just threw some dirt on there and now every time, you can tell where every house, the sewer can connect it to it because you can drive over the ruts every time because that, they didn't fix it very well, they just threw whatever, the asphalt. I don't know if we can hold them accountable for that, but you know what we're talking about.
Please understand what, what I'm, what I'm saying is that I, I totally believe y'all could reach a interlocal agreement to fix that. I'm proud of Gilliam Road. I took pictures and sent them to people, I put it on Facebook and everything else because I drove in the ditch over there for years.
Yep, yep.
And, um, didn't drive on the road or go to the ditch.
Exactly.
This, what I'm trying to get to is like going forward, please make sure that we have a finished product because what they left was horrible.
Okay.
It, it was unacceptable. We wouldn't be at this point, you know, it'd be much cheaper, the repairs would be way less.
Thank you very much. So we're going to, um, entertain a motion to address item G, please.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we get, uh, the county and the state in an interlocal agreement to fix Chaparral Road and Roosevelt Street up to East Alabama Street.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, Bobby, did we have to have that for them to go out and fix, um?
Just a plot list, man.
Like as soon as possible? Do we have to have that in that motion?
It's, it would be part of the motion, but I think, I think it should be clearer staff to take care of it.
I'm in.
Yeah, I will go tomorrow.
Like for, for now, you know, at least to go out there and level the road out.
Maintain.
Because it's, it's, it's like, you gotta drive like a mile, a mile per hour, real slow, but if you don't believe me, you can go by it right now. It's terrible, it's horrible.
See if we can, just see if we can put everything on hold, whatever they're working on, something.
You don't take much to fill out the whole stuff.
Who's talking?
I mean, there's, there's plenty dirt there at the, behind Victor's house, plenty of dirt. All you gotta do is just get a couple of holes and go over there and then.
Take the dirt.
Right, I mean, you just level it out, level it out.
Okay.
You know, just level it out.
Thank you, thank you, guys. We're voted, we're, we're on your side. Okay, we're moving on to item H. Thank you, guys, I'll let you lead. Item H, discussion and prove the utilization of pre-owned county courtroom to the open court. This is an action item, in a pending motion to discuss, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, the judge isn't here, he's out at training, uh, but we have put this on here, I don't know if they've done this before, but they wanna go ahead and do an open court there overloaded with a lawsuit that's just coming up for July seventeenth. I think the community room is booked right now.
Oh.
Um, so he has already, one time reserved, the room over there at the county has got their approval. Um, I just put it on here just so we're aware and we're able to go ahead and move forward.
This is our municipal judge?
Municipal judge, correct.
Okay. And it's already been approved by the county judge?
Yes, it's already, um, well, it's, there's a, uh, precinct.
Okay.
My conclusion.
Okay.
To approve the utilization of your county courtroom to go to open court. Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Just one date, I think.
Yes.
Just one date, okay. Discussion and possible action regarding Pearson Main Street, the side improvement matching grant for two oh five South Oak Street. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss, second.
All in favor? Discussion may take place.
Madam, councilmembers, uh, we just have her, um, grant application, uh, for two oh five South Oak Street to go on to that. This is our third grant that we have. And this is what they're trying to do, uh, power wash, building, the entire building, low pressure, everything that they're trying to paint, building and awning, and then of course it will be done within one or two weeks.
This is Garcia's Bar and Grill. We have Jessica here too, y'all, any questions for them? Um, we're going to the kitchen. They are wanting to basically clean up their building and the pictures that you can see that, uh, they're asking for the total of the five thousand, their, um, their estimated cost will be twelve thousand, two hundred dollars, but the max that will do is five thousand, so they're asking for the total amount of five thousand. Where they will pressure wash the whole building, they will not use chemicals and ensuring that they, um, preserve the building. Uh, they wanna replace damaged wood, replace awning and building caulk and prep before priming, paint, and then y'all, they also talked about replacing the, the damaged windows that are on the second floor.
There's a, there's a windows, uh, good evening, when it was Jessica and I, some with Garcia's Bar and Grill. Basically what you wanna do, you, you just wanna, um, rejuvenate the aesthetic appearance of the building, especially because it's, uh, no, it's on, in the middle of downtown. We wanna just give it a little mini facelift, um, and there's a lot of work that we definitely wanna do, both the main thing, for right now, we wanna start with painting. Um, there are some broken windows on the second and third floor. Those windows will be addressed during the painting process. A lot of the windows, because they haven't been replaced in a long time, will need to be replaced here in the future. We'll do that next.
We totally want to do it in a second application in the second year, the first one they wanted to do is the paint and focus on that and also the awning, um, part of it that's falling down, so they wanna go ahead and replace that, repaint the whole bottom of it, so, uh, the triangles are there too. So, and, and something said the burgundy, they wanna go to more of a gray color, they wanna basically, um, can we go to the colors? The colors are right there, so it's like a, the A is gonna be the awning and then B, there's different, there's a lot of different colors, I'm gonna show you here because they're, you can see it better. What's the burgundy red color right now? We'll turn to this B color, which is a darker gray. And then there's the, um, the S, there's an accent under that and go down to the picture and it shows, um, so A is this dark color, which will be awning. And then B is the burgundy color. C is that trim right under. D is the cream color, they wanna go to, to one of these. They did two colors because they're gonna go and see which ones they have in stock, so it will be one of the two. So that's what she gave us, these. Um, E will be the trim around the windows. So here are the color samples, they just, and they wanna go with accents to pop out like the windows and, and make it not, y'all went off the Cindy's building also, right?
Correct.
And they're gonna, they want, since they're right across from Cindy, they were trying to not match, but resemble what they did there.
And, uh, for our contractor, he said that the project is estimated to take one to two weeks, depending on the weather. If there's no rain, of course, the project will be completed a lot faster and all the workers will be wearing fluorescent vests throughout the entire time that they're working and, and a hard hat as well, and they will be cleaning up daily. So, and our, and the restaurant will be open during business hours.
Okay, councilmember.
Um, the broken windows that are up on the second and third floor, is there anything
Is there anything there? Do birds come in?
There's no birds. We have curtains and we have some plywood on the inside of it, so that there's nothing that comes in. Even when it rains, nothing goes inside the building. It's just covered. But with the picture, you can't really appreciate it there, but everything's secured on, on the inside. And it's two windows, one on the second and one on the third.
Okay, so those areas are cleaned?
Correct.
All right, and you mentioned you're gonna replace, are you gonna replace all the windows right now?
We're not gonna replace all the windows right now because a lot of our money is going towards the painting. Because the building is so big, and we're only given a certain amount of money based on our contractor. It's a pretty pricey project. It's twelve thousand two hundred dollars just for painting and just to do minor repairs. So we want to start with the painting first, and then from there, address other issues that definitely need to be addressed. But there's definitely a lot more work to be done to it, but we want to start step by step.
And that's what we had discussed, being that you can do the second year, that they would be willing, they would want to do it again next year and improve.
And do the windows.
And do windows, correct. And focus right now on the paint and then go to the windows and then go on from there. We did also put a memo in there, the same memo that we used for Barnhart, saying that any pressure wash, make sure you don't go over four hundred PSI, don't damage the historical property of the building, and then if you do anything with the mortar. I know that there's some brick on the other side of the wall, so that's where we're protecting the building. It's there. So we did do a memo, just basically saying, don't damage the historical value of the building. So we did, we did also add that in.
I have a question. If you're not gonna fix old brick, then how are you restoring?
I'm sorry. We are replacing the brick. We are gonna replace, we're gonna caulk any areas that need to be caulking. That's why we want to go ahead and pressure wash, basically, and evaluate the, what we have to work with. If we have to make any adjustments at that point in time, we will. But that work that we presented, which is the painting, and everything, everything will be taking place. Now, for example, if there's a lot of, a lot of brick that needs to be replaced, obviously we're, we're going to paint it, but that area will be, you know, will be addressed at, you know, at a later time.
And is in your guidelines, is it existing brick cannot be painted?
No, 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 it's not, it cannot be painted. It's saying that you cannot, here's some, the, the pictures that you can damage. So whenever you pressure wash it, don't go over four hundred PSI, which will create damage to the brick. That's what we're saying. It's a guideline just saying not, how not to damage your brick. It's not saying you cannot. It's saying, don't go over the pressure that we can use, and it's just, it tells you exactly what you can do to prevent damage. That's all it is. It's a guideline. It's not saying not to do it. It's just saying how you can do it the proper way, not to damage your brick. Even if it is a historical building, and we don't want to go in and power wash and there's a hole in the wall, which there's pictures that you can definitely do that. So that's, we just want to make sure we don't damage the building.
Look, I have another question. Are you gonna be able to access the entire building or they're around?
Yes, it will, we will.
Without even knowing someone's roof?
If everything is going to remain as, the building is going to continue its normal function, and the contractor specified that everything's going to be accessed, all exists are going to be accessed, you know, accessible during the entire process.
Well, what I'm referring to is, is painting the top of the building. See, we couldn't paint the top of our building because we cannot access the sides, because we have to get on top of somebody else's roof.
There's no building there.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking, and that's, that's a problem that's gonna come up eventually in our next year, because a lot of buildings.
Are joined.
Are joined, and so to get to access the side of some of those, you gotta get up on somebody else's roof. And that's why we couldn't finish car coming up there, because we cannot get up on their roofs, so.
And see, within, they have no, there's, there's an alleyway, a parking lot, and then two streets, so they will have that problem.
Okay, so that there is an alleyway between Garcia's and?
Yes, at the opening.
Yes, ma'am.
I know I made the same improvement matching grant application for the two oh five South Oak. I don't know if I'm able to ask the question. I noticed that Mr. Barnhart was supposed to start a month ago, and I see no.
No, we can't, we can't answer it.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's not on the agenda. We addressing Garcia's only.
Okay, one last question. How does, how does the process work for, for actual payment?
I'm sorry, for the payment?
Yeah, how does the process work for actual payment?
Once they finish, once they're complete, we, they will, we'll do a checklist. And the checklist basically says that they, they completed their application. It was approved by Main, by the Main Street Board, by the council, by city manager, by the director. And then after that, they have to go through their procedure, giving pictures from before, during, and after the process. Once that's complete, then we will have to go do a check, a check on it. We go and, as staff members, we can go do a walk through, make sure everything on the application was done. Then the business that that applicant has to provide us with the pay, the invoice, the checks that were, a copy of the checks that they made payment. Most of them have to do deposit, and then the final ones will be two copies. And then after that, we'll get a W nine. After everything is given to us, we will reimburse fifty percent after everything is paid, and we have copies of everything. Even if, for example, our, let's say we, during the process, there's, we find other things that are damaged, and our contractor says, well, you know, I'm going to have to increase your, your total of twelve thousand, let's say it turns into fifteen thousand. The city still only, it has a maximum amount of five thousand dollars. So we're going to cover the entire process regarding, regardless of there's any kind of changes in our estimate. And in every application, we are only covering what we approve. So if it changes down the road, we're not covering that part. We are covering what we approve. No work can be started before the application is submitted. If it is started, it doesn't cover it. It has to be what is approved during the application process and only what is done after. We are also gonna have the date it started and ended, and that's what we cover, just what we approved in the application.
Thank you, thank you.
To go ahead and approve the Pierceall Main Street, the same improvement matching grant application for two oh five South Oak Street.
There's a, there's a motion on the table. I have a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you. All righty, J. Discussion and possible action on setting guidelines and fees on local septic disposal companies to be able to dispose at our local disposal site, committee disposes there. This is an action item. Let's entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion.
All in favor? Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, this is, I don't think we've already discussed this, because we had reviewed this at one time in regards to septic power loss. This is what we currently have in place, the Pierceall, the eighty two point eight five at Alton Downland. And then we did now this on Pleasanton, Pachula, Dilly, Lytle, Saw, Divine, Corrego Springs. We tried to add Crystal City, Crystal City, and Charlotte. We weren't, we're getting back from them, so those were still. Charlotte does not allow, and Crystal City, we're still waiting on a bonus back from them. So these are the rates that we currently collect before, would be two eighty five per thousand. Yeah, this is, we are, our wastewater plant is terminated for one point nine million, it's currently occupied. And the summer run, fifty percent of its capacity, and in the winter, about forty percent. So the proposed rate, Pierceall, was going to propose a rate at four fourteen twenty five, or a cap at five thousand, five at a thousand gallons. Or a proposed rate of eighty two eighty five at a thousand, it's the same thing, a thousand. And then at five thousand is eighty two eighty five. Because these trucks come in, we don't know if they're full or not, so we just anticipate that they're full. Five thousand is a cap, so we charge four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty five cents. We also identified a schedule here, Wednesday, one through four, Thursday, one through four, Friday, come through. Monday and Tuesdays are off due to testing and, and also provide right to refuse or interclose at any time due to testing results or operational issues. And of course, no industrial housing complex, no major corporations, companies, providing for our local residents here with what we can accommodate. So this is everything that we have previously presented. And again, I think Mr. Councilman, what y'all had asked us to go ahead and do a plea, Crystal City, Charlotte area, and like I said, you don't have it anymore. So these are the three. And we are proposing at base rating at four hundred and fourteen twenty five cents, that's a five thousand. And then anything, if a truck comes in that's a larger capacity, it would be a four fourteen twenty five plus your thousand, per thousand dollars, eighty two eighty five.
Any questions, councilors?
The, uh... What I want to say is that, I don't know if there's anybody here from the, the septic companies. Do you know if these are, these fees are about right, or?
I've been trying to clean my glasses where I could see that, Crystal Springs doesn't accept any outside water. That's probably why they haven't fully got back to you. And I would caution the council to, I hate to say this, but take care of your own people first. That's what a lot of other people, a lot of other cities do. And be very careful about what you take in, because I think y'all probably all know that we were just on the verge with T C Q for a long time, the plant's finally up and running. I was really, Hector's not here, I think, but I was proud of this very slowly. And be careful who you do business with, you know, like what kind of, you want to stay away from people that are hauling this total four potties.
Total what?
Uh, four potty waste. It's so hard to treat and stuff, it would probably really fall off our plant them. So if you have somebody that's doing more septic related, you know, I mean, I do four potties, but a whole lot of mine is diluted because we haul so much septic waste. And, and I don't mean black waste. I'm talking about that we use like from the man camps and stuff, which is, a lot of times, my side glasses are just pretty clear. Actually, I'm trying to get in with another company in Corrego right now, and they, they just looked at my truck and said, we're not gonna have, we don't even take a sample, we're gonna be fine, but what is, what is the rate per?
Per thousand?
Per thousand.
Eighty two eighty five.
Okay, so that's eight, eight point two eight cent at the, eight cents a gallon?
Right, nine, nine, nine.
Nine cents a gallon? It's too cheap. Even as a caller, you can, you can do better. I suggest it be more around fifteen cents. Make some money for the city.
Roy, I was gonna ask you a question, if I may, because I'm not too familiar with these permits. But you're saying that for us to monitor, right, who disposes there, right? The question is, do these people have to be like certified with the state or licensed with the state?
Well, absolutely. You gotta be T C Q certified. I'm amazed at how many people still won't run, like the most basic thing that they have is what's called a five, five part copy that you have to take into the plant, you know, to be assigned and stuff, so that basically one stays in the truck, one goes to the customer, one goes to the state, one, you know, and a lot of people just come in with one little piece of paper and get away with it. I don't know how it's happening, but that's why I'd say I would start with just your local people first, get it running right, make sure that you don't walk the plant back down where we were, you know, a year ago, so.
Josie, do you know if we have something like that in place?
I'm sorry?
That was several years ago.
We used to do it, like you said, then that all our T C Q, our, our system went down, so we went away with it, and we got our system back up and running. Hector did get with us to look at this, and that's why he made a point to put in there, right to refuse, because we do have to keep an eye on, on who's coming in and making sure that our capacity level is sufficient for the loads that are coming in. Once we open those doors, they're just gonna all start coming in.
I mean, it's up to you guys as a council, like who, who do you accept? I, I've been on Corrego Springs for probably six, seven years, and I haven't given permission to go there.
Bob, what's the legality on that? Like exactly what Mr. Lee's actually saying, can, can we just allow just Pierceall residents, I mean, yeah, companies?
Can they like make like all application and as approved by the council, we accept them to the city? But we can't accept them. The council needs to accept them.
I don't have, I don't have a issue with you being careful about who you allow to dispose, and you're gonna have a better relationship with and know who you're dealing with if you start off low, until you decide how much you can take, or whether what you're getting is what you want, and it's constant.
Exactly.
It's not a bad idea.
And that way we can see if they're up to par with their license and insurance and the whole, your trucks are up to par as well?
Yes, because as you know, I represent cities from Corrego, Big Wells, you know, Dilly, on up, and those that allow for disposal, sometimes you don't know who you're dealing with and what you're getting. And sometimes the disposal occurs at odd hours of the day, night, or weekends, and it can cause problems with T C Q very quickly.
So they have access without our personnel being there?
Oh, no. Pardon me?
You said all, all hours of the night, meaning they have access to dispose without having our personnel on site?
Personnel need to be there, but then if it's, you know, in that small city, it's a lot. Yeah, you have to be really careful. But if you're dealing with companies you're not familiar with, you're trusting what they're, what they're giving you is, is what's your license and permit to.
Place this over the law. Your name's Jason Owen.
You have, you have to have somebody there.
And that's why we have our hours set. One of four is the only time we accept, we accept. So everybody gets in the routine of, okay, their, their station is open, but we can, we know we have.
Only one of four?
We have all their proposals.
Be a little closer.
So, because our work date is all day. And what we had a problem of two, eight, nine years ago, is that they were closing at five o'clock, and they were dumping on Gilliam Road. There's a little vacant, yeah, there's a vacant, I think it was old jobs.
Yes.
And the trucks would go in there, and it would dump.
That's what happened to the road.
That's why.
Because they were closing. Yeah, they were closing at five o'clock.
And I don't mind telling y'all in private, some of the companies, you want to stay away.
Okay.
And if you, if you look on the Pleasanton ones, they have different rates. They have their current rate, the per thousand, and then five thousand, four thousand, five thousand, two seventy five, but they also have an annual application to identify whoever.
That would be good.
Companies, so we have eyes on them and we can.
Exactly.
We know exactly what we're doing.
That's accountability.
So it doesn't allow any other.
Yeah, like I know fees is not to make, to get rich and to make the city money. All it is, is to make sure they're up to par, and also for the, the fees for the office. It's not to make money, it's to make sure we know who we're doing business with. Because these people are homegrown people, they need business. So we gotta keep this open and available for our local people too, so they can make money.
Fifteen cents is not, that's not outlined. I mean, that's.
And eighty two eighty five was what we did previously, and then we shut it down. We're getting everything in order. Now, we've been trying to, we've been talking about looking in the back though, slowly grabbing back at the same rate, we can wait for more to see where we're at. Put in the annual application as well, so we know exactly who we're going to. We already have identification on everybody, make sure they have the permits or whatever, the things may be.
One thing that the city do that I didn't really like was ever come and pay before. And I've got, you know, accounts all over the state where, you know, we just go in, or everything's already done with the city. The, the way it should be done, T C Q is all your paperwork, should be with the city already anyway. And so.
Well, that can be part of the application process, is you give them a line of credit, where they come in weekly, or monthly, however, whatever the council decides, so they don't have to come in before, before they dump and set up. You know, because if we're going through the application, we have their licensing on file. We have their information. We can also, I don't know if the city's doing draft, draft their accounts, just so they don't have to come out. If we're closing our hours early, that's just another time where they have to be work, and do work a little bit earlier, come in, pay, and set the time.
And we do have collections out there.
All righty.
Did you credit card over the phone, all right? You have the credit card over the phone?
For you to be going open.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All righty.
So what do we need to consider?
We need to, where are we? Side, okay. We need to address item J.
Okay.
Setting guidelines, go ahead.
Setting the guidelines and fees on our local septic disposal companies to be able to dispose at our local disposal site, also an application process.
For accountability.
For accountability for their licensing and also areas of fees.
Is it, is that, are we restricted to local people first or local companies?
I guess it's just like, just so we don't call it out, just we review their application.
It says local septic disposal.
Yeah, local.
All right, there's a motion on the table.
But so are we gonna reconsider the, the fees?
At twelve cents.
Twelve cents, kind of go in the middle of?
Nine and fif- nine.
Yeah, between nine and fifteen, just do like twelve.
I have a motion on that. To approve the guidelines and the fees at twelve cents on local septic disposal company, uh, a twelve cent fee instead of the eight point, I can't read that.
Eight point.
Basically, it's a.
Okay, per?
Thousand.
Per, per thousand?
Per thousand? Okay, twelve cents of per thousand, and on local septic disposal companies to be able to dispose at our local disposal site, also an application process.
There's a motion on the?
It's twelve cents per gallon, I'm sorry, not, not per thou, twelve cents per gallon.
Per thousand gallon.
Yes, ma'am.
That's gonna be incorporated as well as the base price, we're going to base cap at up to five thousand, whether they come in shorter, um, if they come in and it's only, uh, a tank that's full at three thousand, we charge the five thousand gallons.
Okay.
Uh, and then anything after five thousand is measured to the twelve cents.
Okay.
Staff is gonna have to bring in more than it's back to the civilization, with all your ways to be charged.
Yeah, cause I can't put off the rates, cause if it's a base rate, I'm gonna go ahead and redo my, um, motion, can I?
You can withdraw.
Withdraw my motion, okay, and then put into place a new motion is, um, setting guidelines and fees on local septic disposal companies to be able to dispose at our local disposal site, with an application, um, process, as well as fees.
Okay.
As discussed.
As discussed.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
That's not Marcus' motion there.
Item K, discussion possible action on waiving all fees for the V F W post ninety-one, ninety-five for a benefit softball tournament at the Victor Trevino Complex on August twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. Action item, need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Yeah. Um, my name is Dennis Gassal, I'm a member of the, uh, the Department of Justice, the Betterment Club, and we're doing our annual softball, yeah, we're gonna do a softball fundraiser, we're gonna ask the, a little loan funding, we can kind of do some repairs, uh, repair the women's event, and so we're trying to generate some money to get our roof fixed, but our roof is, uh, we have some leaks that cause a little more damage, so we got with some of the local community members, and as well as the George Kalasas, who said he helped us with organizing the softball event, the fundraiser that we can kind of generate some revenue, and we're asking you guys to please waive the, the fee that's charged, you know, to utilize the sports mechanics. We'll plug in all the people that we manage, as far as volunteers, some of the others we have to run the concession gate and cleaning up and stuff like that.
So the fees are for to repair items in the V F W itself?
Yeah, whatever we, whatever money we're asking to be, the fee for the softball conference to be waived, whatever we generate from that revenue as far as the teams that pay the tournament fee, uh, concession stand, the fee entry, all that revenue will go for the items.
What a question?
Yeah, a question. Who's, who's helping organize the track?
George Kalasas.
And he's going to delay all proceeds to, uh, to the V F W.
He's gonna charge the fee, cause he's the one that's gonna organize all, getting in contact with all the teams, he's kind of familiar with how that works, so he'll take the charge of the actual entrance, or the team entrance fees, under team base, like a hundred dollars or whatever, so I don't know the fee, but he's gonna be charged with that part, he'll take the sixty percent of that, he'll take forty percent of that, cause he'll get like the trophies, and the rings, and ribbons, and all that stuff, I'll, I'll figure that, he has sixty percent. On the entrance fees, we'll keep forty, and then the gate, we'll keep all the gate and all the concession, we'll keep all the concessions.
Any other questions?
One second. Yeah, I, I know, I know.
Do we know like how much he makes from that, and how much he act?
How much?
What happens, how many teams?
How many teams he worked in?
So he's making eleven?
It's, it's a lot of money that the, the tournaments make.
Generate?
High profile.
Twelve hundred, or twelve thousand?
You can make it more from six thousand to ten thousand, depending on the loads you bring in.
How many teams come in there?
The, the ones that he just threw them, um, in their madness, but that was a huge success, huge.
And the, the sixty, forty, is that normally what he charges?
I think that's, that's, cause that's what he does, what he does is gonna go and, um, he has all the connections with the teams, so he brings in teams from Norado, even Pass, El Paso, San Antonio, Birmingham, Pleasanton, Corizo, Crystal City, and I guess what sits.
Like, we don't have any contact, we don't know about softball, so.
To bring in all these teams, and you're paying for that, and then I guess he provides the.
The awards.
So you're gonna keep a hundred percent of the gates, cause the gate makes the most money, you're charging seven dollars an adult, three dollar child. So gates, when I, when I throw a tournament, I've made about five thousand dollars on the gate fee alone, that's because you, you charged the whole amount, and I think three and over are free. So, um, if he's, you're keeping a hundred percent of the gate.
Hundred percent of the gate and the concessions.
So you're paying a lot of the fees.
All the entrance fees, yes.
So if there's ten teams entered, and you, the normal is a hundred dollar entry fee per team, that's a thousand dollars. That is an entry fee.
Okay.
So he keeps sixty percent of the thousand, and forty percent go to him, brings, if, if it's, and then this is where you get on the side, if you have four, um, help me, um, different ages?
Divisions.
Divisions. Okay, so you're gonna give first place twelve rings, second place twelve trophies or ribbons, the rings, um, okay, I'll, those rings cost you about twenty-five dollars each, if you buy them separate. If, probably he buys them in bulk, so he probably gets an eleven dollar deal per ring, so he's gonna have to buy four prizes for four divisions, usually he carries four to five divisions. Um, is it?
No, it's, it's, well, yeah.
Yeah, so like if you throw a tournament, it says six U and eighteen U, you have six-year-olds, seven U's, ten U, twelve U, fifteen, or is it fourteen U's?
Six, fourteen, sixteen.
Fourteen, sixteen U, eighteen U, so those are all divisions, all of them have to get awards, because they're paying that hundred dollar entry fee per team, and usually that's what they come for is the rings. So out of that thousand, he's still gonna have to pay his.
Awards.
Awards, and probably, if he's only moving back, he'll probably just clear two or three hundred dollars, if there's ten teams, it's just a percentage. You gotta keep in mind too, if it's different divisions, he has to buy first and second place each of them, and he gets all plaques as well, so.
Have you talked to, uh?
One second, one second.
Yes, ma'am, I believe I tried to sort this. I tried to, uh, fee, right, these complex, I was just trying to do on my own, like a private event.
Yes, um, council.
Have y'all talked to Ramiro, Ramiro has contacts too, I mean, maybe he'll do it for less, or y'all could get more money, or?
Um, we haven't tried, Ramiro, this, that's who kind of, we kind of started talking to, and trying to get some fundraiser, we hit playtails, but honestly, playtails don't generate enough revenue.
No.
Our roof is about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars of repair of the lessons we have from local, you know, certain individuals, and so we're trying to get it fixed, and so George offered a community help side, you know, he knows that, I know from experience, he's a coach, and does that, and has helped, so that's who we reached out to, and, and. I were tempted to look at August the twenty-fifth as the date we're scheduling on Saturday, just the one day, I meant, I was just, just the one day.
And what is our fee again?
It's six hundred dollars.
It's a hundred dollar deposit and six hundred, that's for like both for fails, for all the fails.
With that March Madness, that he threw, that midnight maintenance, and it went on from seven P M. to seven A M.
All night?
All night, we had our, how old was Nadia, fifteen years old?
Fourteen, she called me at seven thirty, that she was in the championship.
We watched her at nine P M., we had to leave, cause we had a tournament, she called at four o'clock, I'm in the next room, seven A M., took the championship, no sleep, but it was a very successful organization, and it filled up the hotel, one hotel got filled up.
Oh.
So, my thing is, making the fee, we've done it for the booster club, George does bring in people to fill in those hotels, cause these people are coming three-hour drive, because we're baseball moms and dads too, and we travel all the time, and we have to stay the night, so with these tournaments, a lot of parents, they travel, and they're, and they spend a lot of money in the town, we go out to eat breakfast, lunch, and dinner, Gatorades, ice, little ice chest at the city.
Okay, okay, alrighty. Yes, sir.
Second, I move that we, uh, sorry, I move that we waive all fees for the V F W post ninety-one, ninety-five, so we can also benefit the softball tournament at the Victor Trevino Complex on August twenty-fifth.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries, announcements. Alrighty, we moving on to?
It's me again.
Wait, you only get one a night?
One time.
One time. Um, discussion possible action on waiving a one-time fee for the V F W post ninety-one, ninety-five for disposal of trash at the transfer station, this is an action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, show your hands, thank you. What is it you wanted to dispose of?
So we're, we're trying to build up our morale and bring new veterans onto the post, cause all my former veterans are older and disgruntled, and, uh, we're trying to push up the pace, it's kind of like all they're gonna maintain, cause we're trying to fix the V F W, we recently remodeled the restroom, made some, tried to build patches to our roof, throwing some new paint, things like that, we have an old storage building in the back that's full of junk, uh, busted chairs, trash bags full of, I guess, old papers, old documentation from back when they opened the post, we're trying to go through that, I'm scanning whatever's vital to the charter part of it and all that, so we're trying to clean that up and just get rid of all that, we have an old sofa that I don't know how, I think somebody tried to dump it in our dumpster in the back, you know, if you don't lock the gate, so we got stuff like that, we're trying to get rid of, uh.
I think start locking the gate.
Yeah, so, oh, you know, old little garbage pit, you know, just things like that, so we have a long little dumpster that we get from the city, but that's not big enough, we've been trying to fill that up, and then along with whatever the bar, or the hall, or the birthday party, there's just too much trash, go rest in it. For one day, if we have two or three loads, we go and just take a pickup truck or two, junk to drop.
What is that cost?
Truck or a trailer?
One second.
Well, I have a pickup truck, and I have a big trailer right now, so if I can get somebody to, then a sixty-foot trailer, probably be one sixty-foot.
One sixty-foot trailer is how much you talk to me? So, if, if the max would be what?
It's about two hundred dollars, so that's, I just paid them for a trailer. I mean, not recently, but we were.
Alrighty.
No, it is.
Okay. Alrighty. Intain a motion, I'll look behind.
Well, I'll make a motion, uh, we waive a one-time fee for the V F W post ninety-one, ninety-five for disposal of trash at the transfer station, um, and I believe they were, they were trying to work it out for this Saturday?
Yes.
Uh, this Saturday.
Uh, we're, well, depends how many of my veterans can make, cause they already know they have appointments, one on fiscal therapy, and I'm trying to get, uh, younger, strong veterans that, you know, weren't bad in combat, and they're still healthy enough to go help us out, but I'm trying to organize it for this Saturday, but it might be the following Saturday during the holiday.
Okay.
How many people would you get?
There's a motion on the table?
Of course.
For one, well, he's gonna do the one trailer load.
Yeah, it should be one, if we get a tracker, it'll be one trailer load, I don't know, I can't tell you what it looks like, how many cubic yards, or how many acres, I don't know, there's John McLaughlin, that's gonna take up a probably a good amount of space.
Okay. Second, all in favor? Motion carries.
I guess I'm not prepared.
Alrighty, discussion regarding the schedule for budget workshop, this is discussion, no action. He's gonna give you a trigger, that's what I was asking. Please say, alrighty, alrighty, discussion on, uh, schedule for budget workshop? No, no motion, no motion, just discussion.
Oh, it's a discussion, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam, may council members, um, I don't believe I recorded T L M, but, however, this is our budget preparation calendar that we've done previously. These are our dates in which we start preparing everything, getting everything in order, um, department heads are, they have submitted all their, um, supporting documents for the, for the budgets. Um, we pretty much sat down, we haven't done a actual budget workshop, cause everything that's been happening, um, we've pretty much, my objective here is to go ahead and start updating revenues for you guys.
Updating what?
Revenues.
Okay.
Um, I did talk to the city manager, we're going, uh, back and forth on phone calls, emails, um, to go ahead and score loads away once he comes on board, we're ready to go ahead and move forward with everything. We do have August first, August seventh, um, budget workshops for council members, um, and then these are our dates that we have done in the past, August fourteenth, I'll propose, uh, and then, and then to propose to the council, and then August twentieth, to submit our tax notice. Uh, August twenty-seventh, um, go ahead and do the second notice, and then August thirtieth, is our first public hearing, um, September tenth, second, public hearing, and then September seventeenth is adopting the budget. These are all dates that we've done in the past, that you know it, they're here, um, so we're just trying to get an idea if this is something that will work for you guys to start implementing, of course, we'll, um, provide notice and everything, uh, the workshop, what will be coming in August.
Take a picture.
I can't see the dates, I have.
I think so.
I, I will give you a copy of everything, whenever.
Except, no, she could, I need it for work.
So articles and dates, we're gonna keep or can we change them?
We can adjust them, this is just an idea of where we're at, um, right now with July.
What is it, July?
There's no July, June fifth?
Okay, so.
Why are you on that August first?
Can you zoom in?
Oh.
Okay, we have June fifth, is our finance, um, which has June, city manager, you, you, and then June eighteenth, department heads, they've submitted, June eighteenth through the twenty-second.
Okay.
Okay, renew and update revenue, June twenty-fifth through July thirty-first, review and update budget, and then our first workshop would be August first.
What is that, July what, is there July there, or no?
Yeah, it says June twenty-fifth through July thirty-first.
Yes, that's, that's all their, their thing, now, first budget workshop is August first, uh, what is August first on, someone has a calendar?
And that'll be pretty much probably the first day of.
Probably what, yes, yes, he will be here, so, um.
August first is Thursday.
Is it Thursday?
Yeah, August is Thursday.
Okay. Aren't you out on Thursdays? No?
Yeah, I'm, I'm out in town on Thursdays.
I am too, so, um. Can we do it the following Tuesday, which would be August what? Okay.
August sixth.
August sixth.
The fourteenth is a Wednesday, uh.
The thirteen.
So the thirteen would be a following Tuesday?
Okay.
Okay.
Council meeting day.
That's council meeting.
And let's move the council to the twelfth?
No.
My reason. Okay. So.
Thirteen.
So we can do a workshop along with the council, we can shorten the regular council meeting, we can do both.
I think.
Yes, we can do a vote, yes. Okay, so you got it?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's gonna be at the same time.
Can you repeat those, repeat those dates, just to make sure?
August sixth and August thirteenth.
There you go. And we can, we can start at six for the workshop?
Yes.
On a Tuesday, can we come in one hour earlier? Okay.
And then the August thirteenth is our regular meeting.
I know it's hard, just get in when you can.
At regular meeting.
Start at six. Start at 6, if the, uh...
With the workshop?
Workshop.
Okay.
Yes.
And do the, uh, do the meeting at 7:30?
Meeting at 7:30. Okay. Okay, propose, propose.
Will the senator, does the senator start in August?
No, he starts in, end of this month.
Oh, can anyone ask me? July 31st, he start?
22nd, he's moving down, so he'll start soon as he moving, moving in.
Okay.
Okay? Um, August 20th? Okay, the rest of this is just all...
Yeah, these are the dates, depending on where we're at and everything, uh, how often we need to, uh, how, um, based on what we do, the tax notice and everything, there are certain dates that pass, we plug in, there's no way around it, it's like 10 days between each others.
Yes.
Uh, so, we can't move it in those dates around, um, and basically, our council workshop is that, um, we can write our financial, everything else, we're just taking, uh, layout of what we're doing.
So, what you guys need to submit are your goals for the budget, like what you'd like to see done. So, we need to submit that as soon as possible to...
Something that we wanna add to it?
Like if you...
If I wanna have a dog catcher?
Yes, yes, yes.
Cause I, I have a proposal on that.
Yes, yes, so you need to submit that.
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
A dog catcher?
A dog catcher?
A pony?
A chicken catcher, whatever, just it needs to be submitted.
A secretary, dog slash chicken catcher.
Yeah, chicken, cat, animals.
Just an animal control person, so just submit whatever you want, writing as soon as possible to the city manager.
I'll read them all.
Okay?
Wait, one question?
Yes.
Have we got, uh, a tax bill now?
That comes from...
Um, I do in my office, that's, you know, in something, I know we had, uh, 295 before, um, and it's...
290, 290?
Yeah, so, it went up, uh, and then, again, later on, it'll, they'll give us a new, where we're at. So, we did go up.
Did it go up because of the annexation, or...
Well, our annexation did go into effect, but this...
Finally.
But, uh, yeah, so, yes.
So, wait, what, what?
More or less, what is it? Do you have, do you have an idea?
I don't have an idea, I'm not able to look at anything right now. Uh, but I'll have everybody.
Okay. All righty. Any other discussion? Just make sure you get that information to the ICM as soon as possible. All righty, discussion, review the requests made by Immaculate Heart of Merrick Catholic Church for disposal, why don't we just do this? Disposal of debris at West Side Cemetery.
That we've already done.
This is already done, we've already addressed this. This is another one?
This is, the request I did was a two-yarder.
Okay.
This one is, they have the, uh, the stuff thrown there at the cemetery, and they submitted this one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they submitted this one.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a hangover.
Wait a minute, this is discussion, so we need to entertain a motion to discuss.
Motion.
All in favor? Yes, ma'am?
Uh, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, the Catholic Church just did provide us with a letter stating that there has been trash dumped outside of the property, uh, for, for us to either go pick it up, or they can go ahead and take it to the transfer station. At one time, uh, they were permitted, uh, to go ahead and dispose, uh, free of charge. I wasn't able to find any, uh, records, staff wasn't able to find any records, I'm not able to waive any fees, so that's why we thought to the council, uh, to go ahead and identify a point where we can either allow them to go do it one time, now that the bins are in place, to go ahead and, uh, go dispose of it free of charge for...
Okay.
Mr. Jackson, uh, Mr. Dominguez, the other one, uh, from the Catholic Church, he's the one that cleans up the cemetery over there, who would be here sometimes, and so he was given permission by, uh, our last city manager to go ahead and dispose of all that, free of charge. Um, so I remember the conversation that we had there.
And like I said, I was in here, I don't know, I'm assuming there was no documentation, so that's why...
Yeah, that part was not documented, it was brought to the council.
Yes. That's his calls? Okay. So, it's just debris, like flowers and...
Yeah.
Okay.
What they're talking about, there's somebody who went and dumped a bunch of trash bags in the front.
I don't know if it was, they went cleaning or, if, I don't know, that there are trash bags out there and cleaning.
Yeah, cause you don't come to, and the trash, because they're always like home trash, and a lot of it.
Did you open up the city mail, the city? No, just kidding.
I, I do that at some apartments.
That's good. All righty.
Dumped your trash bag.
All righty. Any other questions? No, let's just entertain a motion to, uh, address this item, please.
Motion?
To...
To, um, approve the, the request made by Immaculate Heart of Merrick Catholic Church for disposal of, you know, debris at the West Side Cemetery.
All in favor?
Now, is, is the city gonna go clean it up?
Allow them to do that or dispose?
To allow them, we go dispose.
They go, okay.
See?
Motion carries unanimously, please. Yes, ma'am? All righty. Executive session, accordance with Texas Governor Code, Chapter 551, Subchapter D8, discussion regarding reassignment or removal of ICM effective July 10, 2019. Discussion regarding to appoint a new ICM. Okay, need to entertain a motion to go into executive session, please.
Motion?
All in, uh, may I have a second? All in favor? Time is 9:16. Entertain a motion, return from executive session?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? 9:32. Item... This whole session. There we go. Item A, discussion of possible action regarding reassignment or removal of innocent manager. Um, action item? Entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All righty. There were, um, just some discussion on concerns of the city manager, and has been cleared up. Um, any other questions or discussion? If not, we need to entertain a motion to address item A.
No action.
No action taken? No action taken?
Action taken, just continue to support the answer.
Okay, so no action. And while that negates item B, um, no action as well. So, moving on to item 11, city managers report. Make it sweet and short, please, thank you.
I'm just, I'm gonna, I'll get my man, I'll make about 80.
Okay.
And I'll give all the councilmembers and, and, cause I think you're helping out the only one that had the right.
Awesome, thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joy.
Um, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, manager report, the movie from the park has a council great participation from the community to view for families. Um, we have them showing in June, um, due to cancellation for its main theme, "Halloween", July, we're going, and we anticipate successful participation. Grand opening, there is grand opening for any kind of business. Um, it was a great success, we felt the refreshment, and Raffle and Park gave a real muscle stat to check blood levels. A special thanks to Councilman Hernandez, Councilman Hernandez for the participation, and Councilman Lio, um, and to the staff that has attended the event. Uh, summer recreation program, we kicked off the 4th of July with a summer recreation program, which has, has had a great attendance, a lot of happy children, kids. A special thanks to, to Parks Director and Summer Recreation Director, so the park was investigation to the program and insurance, the program has had great support and chapters to the case. Uh, the 4th of July event was a great success, although we didn't have any vendors, uh, the few vendors were successful, it sounds almost, if not all of them, too. Um, the bounce houses were having to be occupied by all ages, and the entertainment provided was enjoyed. Um, this support did have a driving simulator that allowed teenagers to learn the importance of skating, driving, which was a great gift. Uh, we also had a military community ceremony, uh, which provided great recognition and support from our community, as well as a prize giveaway for 38 kids for best of race boxes that we will utilize as curriculars for sports coaches, which was incorporated in the summer life program, um, and each program. A special thanks to the mayor and councilman Hernandez for the participation in the event, as well as the tenants and Councilman Hernandez, um, to our event coordinator and all the directors and employees that worked the event and helped in setting up, your cooperation and hard work is really appreciated and is not known as. Um, a special thanks to the fire department for being present and for their continued support. Uh, the first Friday event, due to the 4th of July event, first Friday event was canceled, but it will continue on every day upcoming month. We do have a financial report, um, and I believe it's there, so we do have, we're at 75% of our budget, um, all our debt is paid up March, we have our pending payments in November. Uh, we have a total cash on the project of $2,093,000. Currently, we have our absorb, taxes are at 95%, the link link is at 68%, penalty interest and costs at 68%. Uh, our sales tax is at 66%, mixed beverage taxes is 111%, and our franchise fees is at 76%. Uh, we also identified the year-to-date, um, total revenue and expenditures for our general fund, we put in funds, water, gas, and garbage. We do have a net over of $54,000, and then, our utility fund, we have $266,000 net over at the bottom, identifies monthly, uh, for a net over of $85,000, this for our general fund, our utilities fund. And then, we have another, uh, financial report based on our funding that we have. Is there any questions on financial report?
Okay.
Okay. Um, the DA, the Land Works conducted their last, uh, public hearing, and the city called it out of the project, in which did not have, um, any citizen attendance, to address any questions or concern, and that was basically, um, something that they have, uh, showed out at the rally. Um, our code enforcement officer has been hired and is in the transition phase of learning to understand organization duties and responsibilities, and we will be scheduled for upcoming training. Our council meetings, June, has been very busy, we conducted five council meetings this June, and then have appointed the city manager, Frederick Reyes, with a start date at the end of, at the end of, about July, so we're eager and ready to welcome him, um, and get ready for the budget. And that was it for my manager's report.
May I give a little suggestion on the Friday, which Friday, evening?
Hmm, you can submit them to her personally, but you may, just a suggestion about this...
Just a suggestion, just about the times that it starts, just to get more people show up. I've been calling people and talking to people.
They'll wait later.
They want us to start at a later time, and live music with local bands. But we're starting at the hottest time, evening at, yeah. Just a little...
We, we can, we can add it.
Consideration.
Well, you can tell her personally.
Okay.
Because it's not on the agenda, and what's not on the agenda shouldn't be discussed.
Okay.
But you can tell her personally, and I agree.
I, I... Can I ask? How, how did y'all deal with them last year with the football games on Fridays? Remember, when there was a football game on the first Friday?
For the, the football games? Cause only about one or two that, that we had, that we were competing with, and we still had the regular people that would come to come out.
Even the cheerleaders came out?
The cheerleaders, but, uh, we would try to do like, we will need two different groups of people, um, focus on different areas, and we don't really target...
Okay. Okay, um, reveal bills, um, June bills. Any questions on that? Any questions about the bills? Okay, 13, city council inquiries for staff, or items for future agendas? Anything you want on the agenda, you can submit it your old-fashioned way.
I have one. Um, I know that we're gonna start working on the budget, but this fiscal year is still three months away, and, um, I know that there's some, uh, open line items in the budget, that there's money out there still. Uh, I know that city managers and the payroll, one of the payroll employees have retired, and what I wanted to do is I wanted to jump on the bandwagon and start with the process of putting on the agenda, uh, for an ACO position.
She just said that earlier than you.
Yeah, but this is for the budget, but this is started, I'm, I'm gonna put it on the agenda.
Oh, you mean?
Yes, to start over, start, because like I said, we're still three months away from this cycle.
Okay, so you gotta word that?
Mm-hmm.
Possible discussion?
To amend the budget, you know, to amend the budget, to, uh, create an ACO position for the Pierce RPD. Do you need three fixtures or three?
I thought we had one. You have another?
No.
We have, uh...
That will give you a...
We have designated two ACOs, well, we have two that are trained, Richard Dambra and Lindsay Montgomery are, are two ACOs. And they've been fully training and equipped for many...
But see, the problem that we were hired as ACOs, they weren't hired as Pierce RPD, and what they're doing, they're working as Pierce RPD, and sometimes working as the ACO. So, I know Peter needs them as Pierce RPDs.
But we also need them.
But we also need an ACO, so, my, those two employees, they were hired as ACOs.
Ours.
They were not hired as police officers.
And they're, and they're, um, putting more of them ACO.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Franco?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, council, uh, yes, they were, uh, the division, the lady, the officer was hired as ACO, that police officer, and she didn't sign the, uh, um, job descriptions, and that's the way it had been advertised. I mean, I called you all to change that, I was just...
Yeah, but it's not working out, and that's what we're figuring out, cause they're, they're controlling the streets, moving that, we need to patrol the streets, cause of the high call, but the ACO is getting adopted, because they're having to work the streets, and we're neglecting the, the ACO part. It's not working out.
However, however, needs to be worried, about, however, needs to be worried, you know, my, my philosophy is, I want a ACO position, strictly ACO position, not ACO slash police officer.
Yeah, it's not working.
You know, I want an ACO officer.
Yeah, I'll second that, as long as that person stays as ACO.
Own.
So, this would be a civilian position, not a police officer position?
Yes.
Civilian, it doesn't, nothing...
Well, see, the rationale behind that was that...
Yes.
The rationale behind that is that...
Issue tickets.[1700.12] Issue tickets.
They could issue citations.
That was the difference.
Yeah, so if, like, ACO, um, when I, I remember Jesse could issue out tickets. Because then he's still licensed and trained. Uh, I mean, he's still licensed as a ACO and he was able to issue tickets. Jesse was, because we would see him at municipal court all the time.
Yes.
If he is, uh, what we found is, uh, he is able to enforce and issue citations for our municipal code, which covers our, which may do half of an animal control code. But he wouldn't be able to do, this person would be able to do that.
Because we have the ordinance.
Okay.
But if the, the state animal, state animal code making an arrest or something, that would fall on him.
Exactly. So they still gotta...
Always can call them for backup if, if that needs to happen.
Um, I would just say, I know we're three months till the end of fiscal year or where we're at. We're trying to reconcile our budget even though we have those positions open. There's a lot of items that have been identified. We've already let the department heads know we're cutting back so we can clean up our budget and make sure everything's running well. So doing this already would put pressure on our budget as well. Um, so that's, we have to take that into consideration. We haven't been able to sit down and go over the budget right now and we've already had some discrepancies in there, um, with adjusting line items within the department. Uh, so that is gonna put some pressure on our budget. We have been in the year.
If we amend it, if we amend it and then we cut positions at the budget time, we can still play with it even though you're pushing it because those positions are there and they're not filled. From what I was researching is that we let go a lot of head depart, department heads with bigger salaries. We hired immediately after we let them go, but with lesser pay and less license. So there's still money there, but we, I think what we need to do is do something now with this ACO part. I mean, if you don't look on Facebook and see these pictures of these animals and then going to our shop, when I talked to you about that, you know, with Glee and some vesting, where we pick up the animals that cannot be vested. And then Dr. Baker from the, the American, he said, oh, I didn't even know y'all were collecting animals. Y'all never brought me, and we still have to follow those procedures. And we haven't, just because they're so busy, you know? So I think that's what we have to do with that.
To answer, answer, uh, Council, Councilman, uh, say what is a true question. Certainly, if he gets the support this evening, we replace him on a future agenda to direct city staff to, um, to look into, um, creating and funding an ACO position, uh, the balance of fiscal year or also to include the next fiscal year. And staff, staff, uh, attend the agenda and they provide all the information you need.
The two, council? That's one? Okay. No, we're on, uh, agenda items. We're gonna keep you in order. We have agenda items. Anything else for the agenda?
Uh, one thing on the agenda, I know, like, speed bumps are, you know, people are always coming with speed bumps. I do have, I have seven residents from Grove Street, seven. I think there's only like fifteen houses on Grove Street. Um, they really need speed bumps. I went out there and sat there for thirty minutes and these cars are zipping by them.
Which street?
On Grove Street. And Grove.
Grove.
Ooh, Grove.
I mean, Grove Street or Grove or Grove, G R S.
Grove. Grove, Grove, Grove. G R O S's? Okay, Grove.
Grove. And, uh, on that street, I think we need, you know, that we put that on the agenda. I think there needs to be at least two. We even have an elderly man that crosses the street and I watched him and these kids don't pay. It's, it's a long stretch where they can just go, there's no cops.
They, they speed down, because on the data, it's, 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 it's Grove, and they speed out.
It's really bad here. And I would like to put that on the agenda because I've had these people personally knock on my door and say, hey, you used to give us a lot of speed bumps, where's mine? So I'll put that on.
Yeah. Can I put... I wanna, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Mine is, um, Willow, not this side, but that side, south side, South Willow. And, um, that one, I, I leave it on the agenda because of all the bumps that are back there for people go to the pond and stuff like that. They go through that back road and it...
You mean potholes?
Potholes, yes.
Okay.
To fill in the pockets.
Yeah, to fill them in. And then, uh, also Burnell Street.
Speed Run Run, Burnell.
Oh, that's Burnell, I was standing there.
Yes.
Speed Run there because...
And then go fast into the complex.
Into the complex.
Just sit out there five minutes, you'll see it.
Oh, I just did Burnell.
What, what's this? Burnell or, um...
Felipe.
Felipe. Those guys, what are the fossils of?
Alright, go ahead.
Yeah, I find it's all the street super. It was over, um, South Ash.
I was just gonna ask, what's up with that?
I saw it on Sound Ash, who did a beautiful job in the street.
That's what I was speaking about, it was great.
Okay, and that's great. However... However, the, the middle of town is where most of the people traffic.
We have a, a senator's wife or governor's wife.
The governor's.
Since the governor's wife, they have a king of downtown. So, uh, maybe on that maintenance schedule, we can start at the center and...
Yes, um, I know for the rider crew, they focus on Main Street, especially for the fourth of July, they were out there, um, doing the main street, representing a lot of the board and council. But they focus on Main Street and then they work themselves out. The entrances, um, from the highways and then Main Street and then they start.
And if I may suggest for the rider crew, that the mowing and the, and the beating is great, but then all the paper that's cut up...
Pick it up, pick it up.
No, we know, we know what they're doing.
They're leaving it there.
No, but, but they're mowing towards the street. Why can't they move into whatever they're mowing? Because then they throw all the grass out on the street and then...
All they have to do is cut it and then...
I think they have been identified, because I have passed by one, they have, they turned around and...
But it pisses me off, but they leave all the grass out.
On, on the, the grass rather than the...
Why you have all the...
Much better job, you know, it's just that, you know, they just cut it out, that's all, it would look much, much...
Yes.
They got some rain, they have to fill the trash bag, hand one guy.
Right, so any more items on the agenda?
When is the next meeting, ma'am?
Next year. Um, let me look at my calendar. I'm sorry. The day is the ninth, yeah, right?
Two weeks.
Do we have, um...
It was July the thirteenth. Seven.
No, no.
We have, uh...
A budget meeting is the, give me those dates again?
August sixth and August...
August sixth.
Oh, so, so we don't have any more meetings in July?
No, that was, the July schedule was for them, for us, the budget. I think you...
July is for me to start and...
Yes, I think we need to let her...
Two weeks?
When?
Two, two weeks.
I would like to suggest...
I suggest we, we let her get called up, for us.
Well, yeah, they can turn it on, but I would also like to suggest that we have a kind of, um, for the city manager.
Election or something?
Someone.
Okay.
I saw a lot of...
Well, at the, uh...
I'd like to make a suggestion, the mayor's house?
No, the city, um, the, um, civic center, maybe?
The civic center.
Invite the community?
And employees.
Employees and...
It can be heavy orders, not for...
Or maybe the city is for like the employees, so they...
And the employees.
Yeah, because we have this...
And, and the, um, not the citizens, but the, um, the leaders, like the judge, the county officials and...
Commissioners.
Yes. Yeah, we could do it one day at lunch.
Really, like our county, um, people, commissioner. Well, we can make a dinner.
Like, yeah.
A dinner.
Yeah, make it a dinner. Yeah, we were, very good day, we can plan it.
So we're paying for this ourselves. Okay, we can, we can, we'll discuss. We gotta have a reception for him. Yes.
I would like, uh, the city council to seriously consider, uh, Veterans Day ceremony. Uh, it's, it's always like up to the schools, up to somebody else to do it. I think the city, uh, we need to get together, we, we only force it to the county or whenever it's fine. We need to make sure that our veterans are appreciated and the city has a good time.
We can try to find local veterans that went to school here and, you know, I know a few that never get contacted and they're a hundred percent disabled, they're...
Yes, sir.
How many of y'all, without a reservation, how many of y'all know? How many are out there fixing y'all's streets?
How many employees?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
There's two.
Really?
You know, yes, and you know what we do?
What?
We fix the streets, we fix the signs, we pick up dead animals. We, uh, do practically everything and then we're going to fast, you go ahead, so, you know, it's only two. Me and Jesse. And sometimes we borrow two guys, you know, that can help us out, but they're so busy, you know? But that's, I mean, I want y'all to think on that, you know, next time, y'all need to hire people, hire people.
For the street.
That's why the potholes ain't getting fixed that quick, because there's only two of us.
We got you.
I mean, I mean, I'm not being...
This is why we have the Blightour Workshop.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I want y'all to remember that, you know, I mean, it's hard for two people to try to fix everything and, and, you know, it's not just a snap of fingers to go out there and, and do it. It takes time to cut it, fix it, it's not like they say, oh, and they go out there and they just throw it on there.
I hear you.
And I'm letting them, because I'm the one that does it.
And we thank you. We appreciate it.
Well, appreciate it, sir.
Put it where the money talks.
Okay, so do I have a second, or, or, on the Veterans Day?
Yes. Thank you for saying that. Alrighty.
Yeah, and the budget, we'll look at the employees.
I appreciate that, it's like I said, it's only two of us.
And we, we know that. They told us, you know, they cut down a lot of positions and we know, just like with the cops, right now we're with ACO.
And, uh, another thing, it's appointment. Whenever you get a, a quote for a maintainer, that's what, basically what we need, a maintainer to take care of all that.
That's what I'm putting on the budget.
Yes, ma'am. And, uh, another, another fact for, you know, so when we get, I mean, we got the resources, we can do the job, but we need the appointment.
You can't be a brick without straws.
Well, and we can't be just, uh, depending on the county, you know, being at their mercy to be asking for all that.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, any, any, any more agenda items? Thank you, sir. You're supposed to adjourn next? Okay, all in favor?